Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today.
Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you for joining us at the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which was called to order today at 6:02 PM. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call.
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Mo Beadon.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell. Absent. Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Winsell.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Because it's almost her birthday, we're going to have Roast Trippey lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please correct the record that Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell is present with us.
Will do, thank you.
All right, next up, before we begin, I would like to do a moment of silence for Gino.
Pete Strack.
He was a former DPW retiree who recently passed away. He was on a flight with his family, and while he was on the flight, he actually passed away. And so I'd like to do a moment of silence. Our heart is with Gino and his family, and Mrs. Strack, may he rest in peace. Next up here, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of July 22, 2025, with the removal of 9F.
9F? What is 9F?
9F, Library Director, they're not ready. They have a bid that they're working on, so they're going to bring it back to us next meeting.
Second.
Right, motion made by Councilman.
Council Chair.
Yeah, give me one second. Motion made by Councilwoman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer.
I have a.
Yeah, I'm an open up for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, let us finish.
Okay.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council Chair. I make this as important. I wrote this down because it's important. Our residents have been getting the short end of the stick for a long time, living with dying trees, dead trees, sick trees on city property, asphalt patches and potholes on our streets, horrendous blight issues, short-term rentals, problems and reckless drivers speeding and running stop signs, and our residents get the same answers when they complain to the city. We don't have the money to do it, or the money for overtime for our city workers, we don't have to take care of it. We need to hire more police, but we don't have the money. We need to hire more ordinance department employees, but we don't have the money. We need to hire more DPW workers, but we don't have the money. Yet, our comptroller is asking for $1.5 million to repair the Warren Valley Golf Course and Banquet Center parking lot. With that amount of money, we could hire nearly 15 police officers. With that amount of money, we could hire 20 ordinance officers. With that amount of money, we could hire over 15 DPW workers. With that amount of money, we could redo and bring all of our city parks up to fantastic conditions with state-of-the-art facilities, including barrier-free playscapes. To pass item 7B on tonight's agenda, it would be a slap in the face and a punch in the gut to the residents of Dearborn Heights, the same residents we are asking to support us and vote for us. I'm a big supporter of Warren Valley and pray for its success. However, I am opposed to taxpayers' money being spent on what is literally a private business. Unfortunately, like other private businesses in our city, Warren Valley pays no property tax. The current contract with the city with Warren Valley, Warren Valley's operators, is considered to be one of the worst contracts ever signed by the city. This opinion is that of several council members, including our city council chairman. To spend this amount of taxpayer money would be insane. Currently, the city has invested over $3 million into the property. Once the banquet hall opens, the city will receive, hopefully, $60,000 a year per contract agreement. At that rate, it'll take over 50 years to break even on our initial investment of over $3 million. Jason is doing a great job on the golf course, and even with the percentage of greens fees and others, it's still going to take a long, long, long time to get a penny back on our investment. And now, they're asking us, the taxpayers, to put the bill for another $1.5 million. I know this is a horrible contract we have. One part of the contract states that the city will maintain the parking lot. This brings into play a resolution that I'm working on, to amend the contract stating a definition of "maintain the parking lot." Webster's Dictionary has the meaning of maintaining as proactive, aiming to prevent problems before they occur, while the definition of repair is reactive, addressing issues after they have risen, restoring functionality after a breakdown or failure. I had a recent conversation with a well-respected formal councilman in which he agreed with me on the definition of these words. Nowhere in the contract is it mentioned the word "repair," or the meaning of the word "maintain." In my resolution, I'll make it clear, the definition and responsibilities of the city to maintain the parking lot, not repair it. That being said, I am asking that item 7B be taken off of tonight's agenda.
All right, any other discussion? Councilman Ahmad, would you like to amend your motion?
Council Chair, I don't think so. I think let's keep it just so we can discuss it when the item comes up.
No.
Just to be fair to everyone on the table.
I agree with him.
Any other council members? Okay, well, there's a motion on table to approve the agenda.
A second.
It was already seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. But I want to open it up to any discussion because I know Councilman once so spoke from the heart here. So if not, what we have, a motion on the table to approve this agenda. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
No.
Robert Constant.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
And Mo Beadon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have the approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Let's come to someone.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 8, 2025, as outlined in 4A.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair. Council Chair.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the minutes reflect that when we initially went into closed session, we read the motion, which was MMRMA's attorney, Carlito, and his firm had presented the recommendation. When we came back out, it said that Corporation Council had presented it. It should be reflected that it was MMRMA which was present during the meeting and approved it, and it was Carlito's Young's presentation.
Hang on. I just want to make it clear that when we refer to as Corporation Counsel, MMRMA is the Corporation Counsel for the city at the moment while they were discussing that case. So we're not referring to Roger, and like, I don't want to be controversial. Actually, I'm not, I'm going to save my comments, but.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah. Let's not get any deeper. Thank you. There's many times where we meet with MMRMA, we say we're taking recommendation, recommendation of Corporation Counsel. We're not referring to you, we're referring to the insurance company that is standing there.
As long as it's clear for the record, thank you.
Yeah. Well, the city doesn't have a Corporation Counsel.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have 4B minutes of the regular meeting of July 8, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of July 8, 2025, as outlined in 4-B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have minutes of the special meeting from July 15, 2025.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 15, 2025, as outlined in 4C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. We're going to start off in person. Mr. Abdul Haq did call me and ask for an additional minute, so I am going to honor that, and there was an additional woman that emailed me, actually, and texted me for some additional minutes as well, and I have them all written down. So, Mr. Abdul Haq.
Good evening.
You are going to have one additional minute, so you have three minutes. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Thank you very much. Zohair Abdul Haq, Dearborn Heights, Rosemary. I have three items to talk about. The contract for Judy Association. Mrs. Judy has been working with the city for many, many years before anybody was on this city council even. She has a PhD in appraisals, and she has 94% winning cases. I don't see why the mayor or the administration would bring this contract back to you. The mayor had the choice to veto your decision, he did not, which means I hope you affirm your decision by seven to zero to send a message to him, you know, it's not a joke in wasting of time, of your time and our time and her time, by bringing it as he wished. The second thing, 11A, I hope you approve what the treasurer is asking for. I think the history of this administration does not give him the luxury to spend the way he wants anything under $1,500. $1,500, it's for purchasing items as 8.9 in the charter. So I hope you approve what she's asking for, and I hope you ask for every month's list of all the expenditures after under $1,500, because you are the one responsible for the money, and we don't know if there is so many ZDA, you know, under this administration being paid illegally. The last one, Warren Valley, I do trust Mr. Aissa that he's done, I think, something in the backyard of the golf course. It cost him $60,000 when the city paid for similar thing, $159,000. Is that correct, Mr. Aissa? The housing you did. Okay.
Just keep it at Council Chair, Mr.
It doesn't matter. I trust Mr. Aissa, and I hope that you give him the chance to seek somebody to do the work at the golf course, and I am very sure that he will come with a lot cheaper price than what we have seen 1.9 they are asking for. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, one additional minute.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Angela Vanegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Last council meeting, I was up here and I spoke about the Amazon orders being $13,000 a month, and we asked for everything to be itemized, which they did, on the backup. I have a problem. The first problem I have is, on these invoices, our account number's on there, the routing number for the bank is on every single invoice that's listed in the packet. I have some questions of, you know, some of the things we're buying, we're buying Hershey's, Kit Kat, Reese's chocolate bars, we're buying Glade plug-in refill fills, we purchased car mats for $149 for a vehicle. Just, there's just a lot of things. We paid $36 for a gallon of window cleaner, you can get it for Windex for $10 at Menards for a gallon of Windex. I just think that we need a purchasing agent, we need somebody to take control. The city's in dire straits financially, and we spent $38,000 this month on Amazon. I work in a printing company, we buy boxes, I'm looking at all these different departments buying different paper, different boxes from Amazon, they're paying double. I don't know why we're not ordering paper, toilet paper, paper toweling, everything in large quantities that we're getting at volume and at a discount. The city's wasting a lot, a lot, a lot of money, and, you know, it's just a shame that us residents are going, you know, without police officers, like Tom said, trees being trimmed. Mo, you know I have eight sycamore trees in the four houses that I live on at the corner. I almost brought the 32-pound bag of garbage with me from the sycamore trees that I'm picking up.
I actually would just walk through Brickside Neighborhood.
It's ridiculous.
No, I have never seen more sycamore trees.
The bark.
In my entire life.
Yeah, the bark is everywhere now. It goes from one thing to another. I don't have a tree anymore, we were supposed to have a tree ordinance written up, we haven't, we don't do anything. We present everything and we accomplish nothing.
Amen.
And the residents are suffering, and it's not fair. And to me, with this Amazon orders, there's a lot, a lot of wasted money here, and I don't know if any of yous have gone through and looked at everything, but the biggest, yeah, I mean, all of our information's here, our account numbers, our routing numbers, everything. This is ridiculous, this should have all been blacked out, and we're just, we waste a lot of money in the city, and hopefully, when we get a new mayor, things will straighten out, because under this administration, the city is garbage now, it really is, it's bad.
Thank you, ma'am. How you doing, sir? A true gentleman and a scholar. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Jim Gowdy, Kingston Freeway. Well, here's my two cents worth. The blight in the south end has reached an all-time high. People parking their cars on the lawns, overgrown lawns, bushes, trash cans stay on the street for three or four days. We have Airbnbs, growhouses, car rentals, right on Annapolis, sidewalks looks like an earthquake went through. Nobody's addressed the sidewalk since 2000, and that's when Marge Horvath came around the south end to look at all the sidewalks, and I got cited for $700 on sidewalks. The creek is a disaster, it's so overgrown, you can't, you can't see it from the brush. And it's a shame, but there's a monthly meeting on what they're going to do about the creek, but I don't think anything's ever been done with it. Another problem is e-bikes and scooters. God, it's terrible. Sailing down the streets, just like the cars, they barely stop at the stop signs, it's a mess. And the other thing with these Airbnbs, rental cars, growhouses, don't they need like a certificate or anything to open up these places? And the thing of it is, as Nancy said, if we're going to have these growhouses to grow it, why don't we sell it and make, have revenue from the growhouses? Have the revenue? And the growhouse that's on, God, I can't think of the street.
Can you do me a favor, Jim? Can you write it down? That he has it written down? Oh, it's underneath you, underneath the podium, there's a form that you can fill out, and if you write down the information with the address, I will get it over to George, or you can hand it over to George, and she'll get it over to our police chief.
Well, here's another thing, they have the growhouse, there's, are there, is there 220 lines going into, they got, by the side of the garage, there's about three, four big wires going through the garage. Don't they have to have a C of O or any?
100%. I just want you to write down that information on a form.
Well, what do you want me to write down?
The address.
I don't know, the address. I can get it for you.
Okay, you have my number, right?
I think so.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you write my phone number down for him?
Are you going to go up the front door? There's a list of all the phone numbers.
Oh, okay.
Right before we leave, right before you leave, outside the clerk's office.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for your time.
Anytime, Jim. Thank you so much. How you doing, sir? Are you speaking as a resident, or are you speaking as the deputy comptroller or internal comptroller?
Whatever position you want to call me at this point. I'm asking to, for you to table item 11A. 11A is very vague, it has possible contradictions with the city charter as well as city ordinances. I am working currently on a procurement policy, which I was planning on presenting this council meeting, but I didn't have the chance for Plant Moran, the Chief of Staff, as well as the treasurer, to review it, so we can all come to an agreement about how we can go about a strict and formal procurement policy that the city can follow. Part of the procurement policy, I do want to make sure everybody's aware, is the check register being public knowledge to, from $0 all the way to whatever amount, so there isn't anything that's going to be hidden, and I do want to make a point, I am the one that is the filter of all invoices, and I can assure you there's no kind of fraud happening with those invoices. So if there's any question as to people getting paid on a table and stuff like that, or vendors getting paid different amounts, I can assure you that that's not occurring. But I do hope that you understand that 11A does contradict some items in the charter as well, as well as the ordinance, and it's very vague and contradicting items that it shouldn't contradict. The procurement policy that I have in place, that I'm willing to present and propose to you next week, will outline a better policy that the city can implement and hopefully help everybody with more transparency.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable council members. Council Chair, speaking as treasurer for the city of Dearborn Heights. So there was something that was just said, this is regarding 11A, by the way, the resolution. All right. And for the public's information, that resolution is about disbursement of funds in the city of Dearborn Heights. There was something mentioned about being vague and contradictory. I will tell you, this resolution, what you have before you, is verbatim, is copied from the charter and state laws. There's nothing vague in this, respectfully. It's the charter, it doesn't contradict, okay? What is really important to note is that the $1,500 amount that they're talking about is, if you look it up in the charter, it is for the minimum bid requirement for city procurement, not as a threshold for payments without council approval, as detailed in section 8.9 of your charter, which is where you will find all this information, by the way. So I want to ask for your support for this resolution, I'm happy to answer questions, but again, it's all black and white, it's right directly from the charter. I am going to ask the council for support on this, adopt the matter, cooperative effort, practice transparency. You, as a council body, you are the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. There's, last time I presented this to you and brought it up, about six months ago, there was over a million already spent that you have never had oversight of, ever, under $1,500 threshold. Those checks are being written, they're presented to me. Now, I will tell you, I check every one of them to make sure they're compliant, or drawn from the right account, or the general ledger's not exhausted. I will tell you time and time again, I've sent checks back to the comptroller's office because they were in violation of the charter. This document, I'm going to reiterate, was taken directly from your charter, please. This is about your control, your power, your oversight that you deserve to have, and the residents elected us to do, and we took an oath of office for that. Thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Suzanne Weissak at Culver, Dearborn Heights, south end. Okay, I had, my first question was about these water meters, these, you know, our new water meters. I was told by somebody in the mayor's office on two occasions that if I didn't get mine put in, that I would have $60 added onto my water bill. So how are, does everybody have them now, or what? Because.
Well, we're only at 33% of the city has been completed. No, you will not be charged now, but if by the end of the time that you don't have it installed, this is the first I'm hearing, that it's $66, is that what they said? $60?
Yep, yep.
No, no, that has happened. There's no amount. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Secondly, I, listen, I'm not against what anybody wants to do in life or in the neighborhoods, but they need to do it properly, and they need to do it with, you know, proper licensing, and just like you want to drive a car, they better have a license.
I agree.
And, you know, I think the city's missing out on a lot of money by not inspecting some of these places, first of all, because you could get money, I don't know who gets the money for the licenses, but if you have a, open up a bar, the bar owner has to have a license. So, secondly, the air quality is so bad that you can't enjoy being outside, because I'll tell you what, the marijuana smoke is so bad in the neighborhoods that, I mean, we had fog, what, two weeks ago in the air? So, I don't know, maybe I should have a big garage, I'll invite everybody and let you smell what I smell, let you see what I see, and all of that, and then you'll know, unless I grow a bonfire every day and let the police come out to have me put it out and see how they like it. Okay, I did want to, that's what I wanted to tell you. Now, I also made two copies, so you will know the dangers for all your children in these two, which I will leave up here with the lady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
How you doing, ma'am? I know you have your additional two minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
I, my name is Dr. Jemanna Jude, I live in the city of Livonia on Fitzgerald, and I lived on Doc Stater for 30 years in Dearborn Heights. Good evening, and thank you very much for the privilege of addressing you tonight. As a former member of this esteemed body, I recognize the complexity of the decisions that you face, particularly when balancing fiscal responsibility with the need to secure the highest quality of business, of professional services for our city, and I say "our city" because I consider Dearborn Heights my city. I would like to reiterate that I submitted the lowest qualified bid for the Target appraisal assignment. My proposal reflected a fee of $5,500 with an hourly rate of $2.25 for trial prep, all with the established cap of $10,000. By contrast, the competing bid was $14,000 with a higher hourly rate of $250 an hour, and at $14,000 total fee and $17,000 retainer, which people seem to think it's $7,000, it's not, $7,000 is a retainer, so it's not $7,000 standing alone. Mr. Whitmer's recommendation from city officials appears to be grounded solely on his prior working relationship with the city. However, no specific examples have been provided to this body based on any substantiated, anything to substantiate the nature, scope, or outcome of that collaboration, which limits your ability to assess the value of that experience. In contrast, I bring to this role not only cost efficiency, but extensive and relative expertise. I hold a PhD in urban planning, which positions me as a subject matter expert in assessing ways land use patterns contribute to property value. The Target store at issue has long served as a regional anchor and major economic driver in our community. Any assertion to the contrary fails to appreciate economic dynamics and retail infrastructure in our city. I have significant experience representing municipalities, as would be in this case, including assignments involving Big Box, which Target is a big box, retailers such as Target, I have appraised Target and represented municipality against Target, Myers, Macy's, JCPenney, and Sears. I am also certified as an assessor, MCAO, which is one level less than, below your own assessor, which is additional assurance of my technical qualifications and familiarity with relevant property tax laws. It has also been stated that Mr. Whitmer wins cases, however, given that approximately 94% of these cases settle out of court and do not go to. 94% of these cases settle out of court and do not go to trial, it is difficult to determine what that statement is based on. Furthermore, concerns have been raised that regarding a potential conflict of interest on my behalf, based on speculation about pending matters against the city. I currently have no pending cases against the city, and even if I did, I, there would be no conflict of interest based on governing ethical or legal standards, but I do not have any cases against the city. Finally, I have a long and meaningful history of public service to the city. I was a councilwoman, planning commissioner, zoning board commissioner, and Tifa board commissioner. These roles have afforded me deep insight into our economic landscape. These role, I have lived in Dearborn Heights for 30 years. The only reason I left Dearborn Heights...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Your time has been up.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
I will give you 30, 20 seconds to wrap it up.
I respectfully urge you that your vote be grounded in objective standards, those that prioritize qualifications, experience, and transparency. I remain confident that I will meet your expectations and possibly exceed them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Can I see that, buddy?
See what? That? Nope. Can we just follow him or quiet?
Good evening.
How you doing, ma'am?
Good. My name is Floran LaGrasso, Dearborn Heights. Lehigh. I'm here because of an unfortunate incident a couple of weeks ago at our corner at Lehigh and Bailey. Lots of kids in the neighborhood run around. Unfortunately, it's a four-way stop at our corner, and very rarely do people stop. Mr. Wenzel brought up a good point earlier about the stop signs and reckless, irresponsible drivers. One neighbor yelled at an irresponsible driver, which stopped, got out of his car, and started shoving him. Unfortunately, the driver attacked the neighbor quite viciously. It's very concerning that people are being very irresponsible. Now, I've driven around the city, as well as other cities, for family reasons, and there's so many places that have...
Can you speak into the mic a little bit?
Oh, I thought I was. There are so many places that have the solar, solar stop signs, even in the city of Detroit in residential neighborhoods, I've noticed. There's also speed bumps in different parts of the city. My daughter's in Ferndale, and on her street, it's a, I measured it yesterday, it's a 10-foot wide speed bump and about four to six inches deep in the middle. I can't go more than 15 miles an hour over that speed bump without feel like I'm flying. It's just a thought, and something that might be more permanent and low maintenance, just like the solar stop signs. I unfortunately had an incident where I had to lay up for a week and I watched my front window. People don't stop during the day, definitely don't stop at night when they saw, you know, don't see the crosslights. But there's just too many irresponsible people that are not watching for the kids. We got lots of kids in the neighborhood, and even some of their parents are responsible as well. But the stop signs is a big issue.
Thank you, ma'am. How you doing, ma'am? Are you speaking as the chief of staff, or are you speaking as a resident?
Chief of staff. I just wanted to request to remove item 9F from the agenda. We actually went out for bids for that item instead of just going with our existing maintenance company.
We did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it.
Anyone else in the audience? How you doing, ma'am? Please step up. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. We'll have two minutes.
My name is Sarah Winters. I live on Lehigh Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm here to address, the city does not have any services for autistic children. My grandson was living with me for three months. He went to Thorn School. He was sent there every morning. He was sent home every day because they couldn't or would not give the services. We don't have any services for kids. We don't. Our police are not trained, or any of our responders are not trained to handle them. We have no parks. If to take him to a park, I go to Romulus, King Road and Telegraph, to get him a place to play. Yet I pay city taxes? What are we going to do? Autism is so high. He is non-verbal. He is 12 years old. He looks like an adult. Does he understand if a police officer says something? No. Can we train our police officers to help? Yes. My grandson means the world to me. My husband died, he carries my husband's name. My life will go on the line for that boy. And our city needs to do better for autistic people. Last summer, he was a five-year-old autistic child, running down three blocks, almost got the Telegraph and Lehigh Street. I stopped him. I put him in my car and I called the police, because I don't care if it's my child or your child. If he's in danger, I'm going to stop him. But as city services, we have to do better for our children. And I'm going to be one, I will stand here all the time and defend for them. They have every right as a, as a citizen. And our schools, they need to treat better. So I hope and pray that you guys will do that. Look at your parks, because your parks are not equipped. I lived down the street from Dally Park. It's not equipped for him. Last time I took my grandson there, two weeks ago, there was a fight between a gentleman on Hopkins and on Lehigh, and it started off as a fistfight. And you know what happened? Another guy came out of the street, out of the house. You know what he had? A butcher knife. It's time our city stops this violence in our neighborhoods. And when the police come, don't just sit there and drag off. Do something, because it's our children.
Thank you.
Council chair?
Thank you. Again, I just want to add something, ma'am, and I just want you to know that most recently this body here approved a disability commission to be able to look at things like, how do we allow our parks to become more ADA compliant, to offer things for children with autism or just some type of disability? And so this body here is trying to move in the right direction.
I'm willing to help any way I can, but our schools really need...
Well, the schools is a separate entity. That has nothing to do with this body. The school is, the school board, it's, it's the superintendent...
Nobody wants to answer to it. And I understand you can't answer to it, but he, but he went to Thorn, which is a couple of blocks from me, and now he goes to Burger Baylor, which is on Middle Belt and Carlisle, and it's an all-autistic school. He can attend there until the age of 24. We have to have better programs in our city to keep our kids in our city.
Thank you.
Council chair?
Can you also do me a favor? Can you get your number, George? You said it's under there? Yeah.
There's a number in here?
Can we move it, can we leave it up here?
The form.
Yeah. Can you, can you fill that form out for us?
Sure.
Put your, put your information on there, show, email it to us, and then, there's a disability commission, and I don't believe it's already even been, like, fully staffed. We would love, if you want to take part in it...
I'd love to, because my grandson's my heart.
We'd love to have you on there.
Councilman Saad?
Yeah, to echo the ma'am's, young lady's words here about autistic kid and kids with disability, I actually had a meeting with our recreation director about a month ago at the Spirit Festival, and I've brought this up before, that we don't do nothing, not much, for kids with disability with autism. And we took initiative for next year that we're going to have a day, a time, something, even if I have to sponsor and pay for it, for autistic kids and kids with disability, because we do lack, even our parks. It's, it's a disgrace. It's going to take time, but I promise that we are, I'm, I'm at least pushing for it, because no kid should look at the side of a park when other kids are playing. Everybody should be treated equally and be fair, you know, across the board with everything. But yes, it's something that I've definitely bought up as a concern also.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Councilman Wanso, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I'm good, thank you. I pretty, I sympathize with her though, 100%.
Thank you. We're going to have one more resident go in. It's almost her 55th birthday.
29. If she stops kicking people...
Rose has been coming to the city council meeting for 76 years.
Oh, yes. But I've only been coming here for one reason, and I'm here for that reason again, Eaton Senior Center. Your hands are tied. Martin's hands are tied. Everybody's hands are tied.
Please state your name, the city you reside in...
My name is Rose Trepepi, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm Tom Wenzel's neighbor.
Sorry.
He hides from me when he sees me.
Yeah, I would too.
There are five air conditioners sitting in that young man's building that need to be installed at Eaton.
I've spoken with DPW...
Their hands are tied too.
Yes, and...
How do we untie everybody's hands? Could I, should I walk around like this?
Well, we're going to speak to DPW in a second. Maybe Mr. Deep, Mr. Deep, can we expedite that for them? Are we waiting for a senior to pass over for us to say we're going to jump on board on this one?
They've been sitting at, at Canfield for a week.
They need to be delivered and installed.
Yeah. Yes.
Can we get on it tomorrow? Thank you. There you go.
Us seniors could install them, but they told me no way I can, and I talked to DPW too. So anyway, thank you, and I'm going to untie everybody's hands, especially yours.
All right, Rose.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the problem? What's the issue? How come they're not getting installed?
They're not delivered.
Oh, money? I'm working on getting, I'm working on getting us some more money.
Let's listen to the director.
Yeah, let's hear from the director first.
Okay, just on the air conditioners, I was told by DPW they only have one person qualified to do it, and they're just, they're not available. I think they were on vacation and they're returning, and that's it.
The senior?
I just wanted to reassure the person that was concerned about the autism and what we're doing. Councilman Saad, I made all the arrangements, the carnival, it's all set for next year. There will be a special needs day. It's all done.
Thank you.
But what about, what about, I know I requested that, like, those with disability would get an hour before we opened to be able to enjoy the rides and the festival.
I went over that with the, the carnival operator, and he just wants to give them a special wristband and let them go all day, so they can go at their own leisure and not be packed into a special time. I mean, we can do that. I'm sure it's going to be in the early afternoon, because we're going to have a special program for them with, you know, food and games and things like that. But he says it's very costly for them to bring people in early. He would rather them just come in at noon when they open on Thursday.
Every, every city does one hour early. We need to figure out how to get them there one hour early.
Okay. I, I mean, they're, they're very accommodating to that.
The, the point is that the disability is, they don't want to be in a crowded event right in the beginning. What they want to be able to do is, while it's, it's not open to the public and only to those with, with some type of disability, our seniors, whomever, that's labeled under as a disability, can go in and enjoy the amenities for at least that first hour.
Right. So, but we, we're, we're there, we're working on it. It's, it's in the schedule.
You know, and if they can't, if they can't figure that out for us, then let us know that maybe we need to go back to the drawing boards, since we're so quick to, like, look at contracts and try and figure it out. Let's figure, re-figure out this contract, and we can go with another company.
Okay. But let's just talk of what we're doing. Just this week, I met with chief engineer, and we're already in the planning of a grant for accessible playground. We're already working on a plan to renovate Daly Park to add more amenities there, and we're able to do that, you know, using the, the Tifa money. So that, I'm, I actually have some preliminary drawings already of what we're working on, so that's all in the works. When it comes to special needs, once we get through the summer, I'll be meeting with the commissions so we can plan programming and events for them. So we will be working in, in that area for them. Is it a special thing for me? Yes, it is. My son's autistic, so I'm going to, I'm going to pay attention to it. And the show we do, I can assure you, we have several employees that we're, that are working now for Recreation. They're all with disabilities, and we're employing them. They take a little bit more understanding. I understand them. I can work with them and understand, and they're doing a fantastic job. So they're working in our parks, helping us with things, and they feel very useful and, and, you know, very fulfilling. So I just want you to know, those are all things we're doing. It's not on the wayside, they're not forgotten, and we're working on it every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience?
Council chair? I've got a couple of things, so step up to the podium or...
Hold on, the council, you don't have to step up to the podium. Are you speaking as a resident?
I'm speaking as, let me see here. Yeah, it looks like as a resident, most, yeah.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You've got two minutes.
Tom Wenzel, Tulane Street, neighbor of Rose Trepepi, Dearborn Heights. First of all, I'd like to wish Rachel Appoin, happy birthday. Today's her birthday. Happy birthday, Rachel. Oops. Is it that? No, it's that. Yeah.
Speak into your microphone.
Happy birthday to Rachel Appoin. Today's her birthday. Happy birthday. On August 9th, the Friends of the Detroit River, in association with some local Dearborn Heights organizations, we're having a cleanup program at the Heather Lane Park. It's a, the, cleaning the Ecorse Creek, basically out of the water along creek banks, and we're also going to be doing some maintenance on the place gate at Heather Lane Park. And I couldn't help but not mention the Green Monster. If you're familiar with the South End of Dearborn Heights, there's a, a house that's being built in a neighborhood with, with like 800, 900 square foot houses, 5,000 square foot house. It's, it's a monster, green monster, it's all green, hasn't been worked on in nine months. The weeds are literally three feet tall all the way around the house, and trees growing out of the foundation. Nothing's been done to it, except it being completely boarded up now. Ordnance director, Lafive, has, has been very helpful recently. I've been working with him, and we're getting some kind of action taken on citing the owner for the, the blight issue. It's a major, major blight issue. You've got a minute. You drive down Cornell Street and Powers, Eaton, or Eaton on the corner, it's right on the corner, Cornell and Eaton. You can't miss it. It's a 50-foot hot, tall house. I don't know, it's a giant house. I mean, it's huge. And council members, I gave you something today. It's a thing about our community garden. Everybody's got this. It's a proposed community garden. It's a community unity event to unite, unite the community. I wish we could take a look at this and see if we can get something going on, get this passed so we can start working on it, because we have a lot of individuals that are interested in participating in this community garden. Every day I get more and more people calling me and saying, when, when can we start? But go ahead and look at this email here, or thing that George was kind enough to print out, and I'd say pretty pleased, but she did it anyway. And let's, let's get this community garden started, you know, before, see what we can do to get it going before, you know, maybe before the next meeting. But once again, August 9th, the cleanup, Friends of the Detroit River, clean up the Ecorse Creek at Heather Lane Park, 9:00 AM.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else in the audience?
This is echoing, so if anybody in the back room can hear us, it's echoing a little bit. And then I see we also have Tim Emery. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Lady spoke on the autism. I am president of the Board of Education at Westwood Schools. Did you guys give her my phone number? Tom, I know you have my phone number.
I will add to...
Do you have her, have her give me a call?
I will have, make sure that she emails, can we, can we include Tim Emery in the email chain? We can. You'll be on the email chain, Tim. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Renee. Next up, we have Renee.
That's it.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Bye.
Renee, you want to?
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, Renee, in Apple Street, Dearborn Heights. I just had one question. A while back, I believe Chairman Mo, you said that you were gonna look into or start an investigation into the water rates, and, and just wondering where it is with that. I mean, is there something going on? Is it, you know, has it been assigned to someone to investigate all those water rates and the things with the new water meters?
That's a great question. Thank you so much. And when GLWA was reaching out to the administration, they were being told to stop and that they were working on something on their own. And that was the last that they followed up with me, that they weren't allowed to come in or to even be able to look into the depths of what is happening. They were getting pushed back.
Okay, is there any other option on what, what can be done to look into that?
I mean, you know, I, the way I look at it is, we, we have a new administration coming in. Obviously, I, I think it needs to be public, and anything that is taking place. I want to make it clear, it's not on the employees in the Water Department. I think this is a look at what is the expense and why are residents being charged such high water bills? I still personally believe that there's an issue. But again, we're not here to point fingers. We just want to make sure that whatever's being investigated is being done by somebody outside of the city and not the actual city doing it.
Okay, so where does it stand when people are hesitant to change their water meters because of the issues going on?
I don't, I don't have that answer for those individuals. At the end of the day, the city is asking that we're gonna replace every single water meter regardless.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Anyone else in the audience? We have an iPhone. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
As, John Jomar, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just from, as, as a person who served in the past in the capacity of the budget and grant compliance for the city, there is no need for $1,500 limit on minimum or maximum. The charter is very clear. The mayor has the right to sign absolutely my item on any emergency or necessary expenditures. This $1,500 was talked about back in '21. I tried to put it in at that time, didn't go nowhere after I left that position. It is time for the council to recognize that there is difference between minimum bill requirement, and there are no requirement or no authority of anybody to spend a penny without city council approval, except in the case of, under the charter section 9.8, 9, and 5.3, that the mayor has the right to sign and certify that it is necessary under circumstances to spend money without city council approval if it's handled the operation of the city. So with that, I encourage you to look objectively, and at the same time, allow the mayor, doesn't have to be the president or the future animator, to practice according to the charter his authority. If there is an emergency or there is necessary expenditures, they can certify that and send it to whoever and clarify that with the council later on. It is transparency. The city should, it's about time that was supposed to be done in '21. I'm sorry I wasn't able to do it that time.
Thank you. All right. I don't see anymore on Zoom. Anyone else in person? See none? We'll go to, we'll go to fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims on ACHY, your transfer 6-1 through 6-46, 6-49 through 6-60, and 6-62 through 6-63, a submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. In discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is 7A, Assessor Comer Bid Award Commercial Appraisal Services.
Council Chair?
Council Chair?
Councilwoman Breyer?
All right, I'd like to recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind City Council Motion Number 25-380 and award the bid for commercial appraisal services to Froman Widmer, Inc., for a total cost not to exceed $14,000, and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city and authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants to treasured issue payment from account 101-200-817000, which the current budget is $25,000 as outlined in 7A. This is for discussion purposes.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer. Do I got a second?
Support.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ahmad. Open it up for discussion. I'd like to speak on this quickly. Is Director Comer on here from the assessor's office? Is she online?
She was.
Director Comer is on here. Can she please raise her hand? She is. You unmute her.
I'm here.
Hey, Kimberly, how are you?
Hey, I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. Was there a reason why this was brought to the city council?
Yes, so the way the motion was stated originally, there was that added $10,000 cap, and that isn't in the original verbiage of the bid. So if we would like to continue to go with Judah, we just need a motion that doesn't include the verbiage of that $10,000 cap. So that's why it was brought back.
But wasn't the cap offered on the other individuals as well at $14,000?
There was only one cap stated in the bid that was submitted.
And you.
And so if you guys have a cap and you're gonna negotiate that, that's great, but it just can't be in the motion part. And so once that's corrected, then I believe that solves the issue, and we can move forward.
But this, this, this recommendation here was not to say to remove that. This was a recommendation to rescind Jermaine and Judy and to add the other person that you wanted.
That's not what I submitted. I, I submitted that it just be rescinded to correct how that verbiage is. So if you want me to go with Judah, that's not an issue with me. I just wanted, the cap wasn't part of the bid as it was given and delivered to us during, when they were initially submitted. That was all, and I think that, I spoke with Roger about it, would clarify and correct any issue.
Maria.
So I'm not sure about the motion that's being submitted presently. I'm just asking for it to be rescinded, and then if you want to redo the same thing, that's, that wasn't the issue as far as what I understood.
Yeah, Maria, a question for you. Is there a reason why we're, we're requesting to go with a different bidder?
Again, you can choose whatever bidder you want. The only issue with the motion was that you can't change a bid after the bids have been submitted. You have to award it as the bids are presented.
Correct. Is there a reason why we, like?
It was just the original language on the verbiage that was there from the prior meeting. We didn't change anything there.
I don't think the name was given for the initial first one.
It, it's the same motion as the original. Nothing changed.
Council Chair? I think, I understand where the administration is coming from. It was my motion last time, and I changed it to go with Judy and associate, and I think their concern is because I put a cap, and Judy and associate didn't have a cap. But since we have Mr. Judy here today, are you okay with that cap? Would that solve the problem?
No, because the, the bid didn't come with a cap, so you can't request that, because then you're renegotiating what the bids went out, and then that's not open to the public. While the other individuals didn't, you know.
Well, we had one of them with the cap.
Yeah, because that's how they put it on there.
That's, that's how they bid it, correct. So we can't change the terms of what the bids are. You have to award it as it is presented.
So just award them with Judy without a cap?
Correct.
We can rescind that motion?
I think the maker of the motion is willing to do an amended motion.
Well, let me ask Mr. Judy first. Do you anticipate going to court and spending that much money? Like, from your experience, how, like, you know, how many times you have to go to court in case if you have to go to court?
It's my experience that these.
Please speak into the mic, please.
It's my experience that these cases settle out of court. If there's any trial prep, it's usually five to 10 hours, and at my rate, it, my rate is $225. It usually doesn't go more than that. If it reaches that, these cases typically, you know, settle out of court. It's very expensive to take these cases to trial. I mean, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars with court reporters and the attorneys at $400 an hour. So most cities can't afford to take these cases to trial.
Can I ask you a question? I know you talked a little bit about big boxes and. I think, you know, the, the, the last time we were having this discussion, because you became the lowest bidder, the perception became, you don't have the experience. And, and I, I tried to stop the narrative, that, that's not what this case could be. And really, I don't know, but maybe you could tell us a little bit about your experience, or maybe some big companies that you've represented. I know you brought up Target, maybe any other companies?
Yeah, Macy's, JCPenney, Sears, Hudson's, Myers, Target.
That's awesome.
There, I represented the cities, by the way. I was on the city's behalf, not on the private sector behalf. But honestly, all those cases, they settle out of court. Most cities, along with Dearborn Heights, they can't afford to take these cases to trial. It's just too expensive.
Thank you. So you want to rescind it and choosing Jermaine and Judy without putting any cap on there?
I, I will rescind.
No.
No.
Without a cap.
You'd say you'd have to amend the motion. So he has to amend this motion too. No, we don't have to amend this motion. Because she, she read 7A, Councilwoman.
Yeah.
You can still rescind this by accepting Jermaine and Judy without any cap.
What I would do would rescind the, the motion that was made before. Right. Because you can't do the, from what you, where's me?
Yeah.
You can't do the, you see, then vote on it to award the bid, if that's what you choose to do, to Jermaine.
Yeah, but it's, it's all in one motion.
Well, yeah, 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 and to award it to her.
Yeah.
Do you want the original one?
Yeah.
And if you have?
And if you could, just go ahead. So rescind the, the four, the, the motion. 25-380, and award the bid to, what's her name?
Here, you got it. I have it right there. Judah.
Do we, because?
There wasn't there.
Do you have a contract? Submitted to the city? Did you submit a contract to the city?
I have not submitted anything because I haven't been told that I'm awarded.
Well, once we're awarded, then you can submit your contract.
Absolutely.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I, I would just ask, I'm, I'm gonna ask, I raise an objection to what the young lady stated that how cities don't want to go to trial because it's too expensive. I'm not gonna chain the city. I'm not gonna tie us into any kind of strategy, especially where we have other people listening to this. If we need to, we will go to trial if it's so needed. We would not let any kind of financial, to represent the citizens of the city, as was stated earlier, chain our hands to anything in strategy.
My apologies, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Council, Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
Couple things is, we can't approve a, a contract before we have it.
Yeah, we gotta see it first.
We, we have to have a contract. We can't go by someone's word. Approve it.
It must be a right.
We accept the bid.
What are we approving the bid? Not the contract. We're accepting the bid. What bid?
Accepting the lowest bidder.
Rescind and accept.
Your backup.
I know, but I'm saying that, that, that bid is not the contract that, that, that we want to give her. That's the contract between her and the bid.
You're not awarding the contract. You're awarding, you're accepting that, hey, this is the, we're gonna go with the lowest bidder. Then when a contract comes out, you have to prove the contract.
That's going, that's, that's not the way you do things.
In every single time, point of order, every single time you have ever awarded a bid, you're not awarding a contract. Right now, you're about to look at, at a potential bid here for the, the golf course. You, you look at a bid, you see their pricing, and then you guys approve on a contract.
What's the bid, though? We're awarding a bid. What is the bid?
The, who we're gonna choose to represent the city of Dearborn Heights.
It's, it doesn't say the, the person that's, it says we are awarding the bid for commercial appraisal services. Tom, this was last week, last meeting. I know, I know. This is not today.
We'll bring this back the next meeting. We'll, we'll reject this and bring it back the next meeting with everything tightened up.
You can just award the bid and ask for the contract to come back to us.
Remember the last, anyone who said like, we're gonna listen to the professionals? I'd like to believe that our clerk is a professional and is expert as a clerk. She's the elected official. Madam clerk, how does that work?
Well, you want to rescind the bid, or you want to rescind that original motion.
Okay.
And then award the bid.
Okay, and then what happens after that?
Because you had the, and then to, once the contract is brought back to council, then you can award that contract.
Is that normal practice, by the way?
Yeah.
I know, guys, nothing from the audience. I, I understand that. I, I, I'm asking the question because I know the answer to it. But please, nothing from the audience.
Council Chair?
Yes.
Nothing personal. I mean, I, I have no dog in this fight at all.
Yeah.
But I, does any, do any council members have a personal relationship or business relationship?
Zero. I have zero. But what I, what I want here is, we can't pick and choose when we want to spend a lot of money and then pick and choose when we don't want to spend a lot of money. You know, like, we come back and we say things like, oh, we have no money for this, and why are we spending all this extra money? But then when we go to spend extra money, it's like, oh, well, $27,000. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty offended by that.
About what? $27,000 for what?
It's $7,000 that could potentially pay for a part-time employee throughout the summer. If we want to, if we want to say, talk things like, we shouldn't be spending money because we can be putting it to trimming a tree or, or, or having this, but then when we come to say, we're gonna choose a small, lowest bidder, I have no, I have nothing in this, by the way, either. I don't know, I don't know her, I don't know the guy, I don't know the other person. I can care less. But, but what I can tell you is, it was a lower bidder. You and I specifically know, and I think anybody on this council, being a fiduciary, know that the city is in a very dire need. You, you just read a whole thing about how the city needs money. But then you're like, oh, it's okay, let's just spend an extra $7,000. It's retained plus an additional $10,000. That's $17,000.
Well, what the, what, it's $7,000? I thought it was $4,000.
It was retained for $7,000 with an additional $10,000. That's $17,000. That's $17,000 that we can, towards the park, towards, towards more police officers.
I mean, why, why can't we just see the bid? I mean, we amended the bid. A council member amended the bid. I know, but they amended the bid last meeting.
We didn't amend any bid. All we said was, we're gonna go with the lowest bidder. The city wants to use the higher bidder.
No, we amended the bid.
We tried to amend it.
We put a cap. I, I put a cap on it.
And so he, this, now we're saying that there's no cap. What would you like to do, Councilman?
I, I'd like to see, you know, come in with the bid, see the bid, like everyone else. I mean. Well, that's a bid in front of you, Councilman. But it's not, doesn't have a cap on it. He was trying to put it. Bit it out, Tom.
It, come out. There was no cap on there.
Right.
Councilman said, we're gonna go with this, and if just to make everybody feel comfortable, let's add a cap.
Yeah, you can't do that.
The assessor said, we can't do that, so accept the bid with just the lowest bidder without a cap.
I don't, I, yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
Just, look. Like I said, nothing personal, but it's just kind of odd approving stuff without nothing, I mean, without, one of the bids, there was three bids, I think there was, right? Three? And we've seen all the other ones, but the one we're approving is one that.
No, Councilman, you're, I want you to correct the record, because you, you, what you're doing right now is you're, you're enticing that, like, we're doing something illegal or so, you don't have the other information. Come out. Come out. I, I want to say this. What you're saying is not true. You have all three bids. We chose, if you open, look at your computer, you'll see you have all three bids. You're saying, oh, I saw the other two bids and I didn't see the other bid.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Because you're saying you have no dog in the game, then you say, oh, does anybody here know anybody? And you're kind of insinuating things, and to be honest with you, I don't, I don't appreciate that. Because what you're doing is insulting one of your council members, and I know it's not me, because I have no.
I don't want to make anyone, I'm going to clear the air on everything.
Yeah.
No questions. So I'm just saying, I'm just making it clear. We have three bids.
You, and you have all three bids.
We're approving a bid that's going to be altered.
No.
No.
Because the, the original bid doesn't have a cap.
He's reading, we're rescinding that. You're rescinding the old bid that's same because it wasn't approved that way, and you're approving the lowest bidder. I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to explain.
I'm just saying, we're, we have three bids.
Okay.
And we looked at all three of them, but now the one that we want to award is not going to, that bid is not going to be the, the bid that we accept in the end.
No.
Because it's going to have a cap on it now.
No, we're rescinding that because there's, no, you can't, you can't. We're removing that. We already approved it. It passed five to seven, I'm five-two. We're rescinding the five-two approval, and we're taking it back as the original bid that was, that was submitted. The original bid that was submitted. No, there was never a cap.
Okay, so we're approving this with no cap.
Exactly, which is the lowest bidder.
Oh, I ain't going to approve it with something with no cap.
Okay. Then you don't have to. Let the council here make its decision.
Well, the thing is, the way they put the bid, Council Chair, they, they didn't ask for a, for a cap. So they should have probably asked for a cap or.
Yeah, I mean, just how they do is redo and say there's a cap.
The thing is, Councilman, we don't have the time. It has to be submitted by September. So you need to pick something today because you need to have the report by September.
And, and again, I hate that. I have to agree with him on this one. We're always so quick to rush the council. You have, you know, you have short term, and if you don't do it now, we're going to lose it, we're going to lose it. Now, I know I spoke with Kimberly, and she did tell me we're on a timeframe. Like, man, you guys can't keep just throwing something at the City Council last second. If you don't approve it right now, you know, we're going to lose out on this money. Sucks. But we didn't do that.
The deadline is September sixteenth, and you don't have a minute after that. The deadline is midnight, September sixteenth.
Thank you. Okay, we got a motion here to rescind and to accept whichever bidder we choose here, guys.
A second.
No, motion's made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilwoman Ahmad.
Let, let her restate her motion.
Can you, yeah, can you restate your motion?
Uh, we want to.
Removing the cap of the one that was altered with.
Go with the lowest bidder, Judea and Associates.
Okay, we're rescinding the motion. We're now going to go with the lowest bidder without a cap.
Thank you.
You don't need to mention without, just, we're going with Judea and Associates.
Yeah, with Judea.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by?
Second.
By Councilman Conston. Any discussion? Just wanted, for the record, yes, ma'am?
I think in the original motion, it said to return the bid bonds to unsuccessful builders.
And return all the bid bonds to all the unsuccessful bidders. Can you say that, please?
And return the unsuccessful bidder's money.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll get a contract, then we'll get a contract at the next meeting and then receive.
And then we'll put that before the City Council.
And that'll be at the next meeting. Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on this? I just want to make very clear. Because some things are being said. I have no affiliation to any party about any of this. I don't, my business doesn't even operate in anything in commercial, or just full disclosure. Same here, too. Okay?
Same.
Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Robert Conston.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer. Yes. Tom Wensel.
No.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell.
No.
And Moby Dun.
Yes.
Motion carries five-two.
Thank you. Next up, we have Controller's Office bid award for Warren Valley Golf Course Parking Lot Project.
Council Chair?
Councilman, uh, Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Warren Valley Golf Course Project Lot Two. Is outlined in seven B.
They didn't.
Blank is outlined in seven B. Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston?
Why is it blank?
I'll second for discussion.
Seconded by Councilman Saab?
Fill in the blank with who.
Yeah, that can be discussed after. Uh, any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I, to be honest with you, I completely reject this bid. Um, in any form to any contractor, because I truly believe the parking lot, my personal assessment based on other city officials, I think we can do a over there two-inch cap on it. I just don't see why we've got to spend one point three million dollars for all the extra work. I mean, the parking lot's been the same way it's been for decades. Never had an issue. All of a sudden, we got to tear the ground up. I just, uh, our job was in the contract, it was to repave the parking lot, not to completely rip it out and tear it. And I believe there were some, uh, some statements made at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, about a bid saying that we, you, or I had put a bid forward from a, from a contractor. Just to clear the record on that, Mr. Isa's attorney and Mr. Isa himself had sent that, uh, bid in. Uh, and I'm not sure what the price was. I think it was like four hundred and six or four hundred and eighty thousand. Just to put that on the record, uh, for doing the whole parking lot. Uh, to get up to the bids that we see here between a million to one point four million dollars, absolutely ridiculous. Um, I, as much as we have to get it done, it's in our contract, it's an obligation. The city owns the property. Whether maintaining it or repairing it, it's our duty. Uh, that's a contract the city signed a few years back. But I just don't believe that, what the requirements here and what weight trimming, uh, and our city engineers' request is just not feasible at this time.
Council Chair? I'm going to just give a quick discussion and I'll let, um, Mehdi, if you don't mind, coming up here. Um, you know, we brought BSNA for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, or what was it, three hundred fifty thousand?
The first payment was three hundred eighty?
Three hundred eighty thousand dollars.
One sixty, I think.
And when we wanted to find the money for BSNA, you, Chief of Staff, um, our IT Director Cooper, you guys were scattered around. You were able to take money around from everywhere. When I asked, where is this money coming from today? They said, fund balance. We don't got that money in fund balance, and if we do, you need to show it to us. And if you, if you are taking it from fund balance, you didn't put it in this motion, nor did you state it in the backup. The reality is, for me, one, I have to give it to Councilman Saab. One point one million dollars should never have been the cost. A quick layover, stripe it up, keep it moving. That, that parking lot is the one parking lot at the golf course that has never flooded, ever. There's no reason why we need to come in here and drop all this, all this money when it could just be a quick layover, make it look pretty and straighten it out. That's number one. But that's for a whole different discussion. But why are we not telling us where's the money coming from? How are we, how are we to approve something from a fund balance when we sat here through a budget season just in April and May, where we said we only have like thirty thousand dollars left in fund balance?
Thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you know about a different number that you did at the schools with us, but, uh, I know you do a really good.
That is, uh, the revenue and expenses, the difference is thirty thousand. The fund balance is essentially what you have in an unrestricted bank account. Um, so the unrestricted fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five should be approximately two point two million.
Based on the golf course.
Just two weeks ago. Give it to me today.
I understand that, but you got to remember that this budget, we are matching revenues and expenses. So if we don't go way over like we did last year on overtime, which I, hopefully we don't, we should end this year with two point two million dollars of fund balance as well. However, this parking lot, um, project, as Councilman Saab did state, it's contractually obligated. We have to move forward with it. So the idea was that although the parking lot itself, the total cost is one, one million to one point five million, the cost associated with the portion that the school's going to be using is going to be covered by the schools, and then.
School backed out, by the way.
What'd you say?
The school's going to still use the parking lot, and it's going to say that the city needs to pay for it.
I mean, that was a.
Every time we have a good idea, somehow things get all caught up and then.
I mean, here's the thing.
We lost out on three hundred thousand dollars.
So the idea is, if you do approve it, you can put those kind of stipulations in the motion to say, hey, we will approve this, but only if A, B, and C occur. You've done that before. You've amended the motion.
I need to know where you're taking the money from.
It's going, it would have to be coming from fund balance. So based on our projection, the fund balance this year is going to end up at two point two million dollars. Fund balance is scarce. I'm not saying that this is a great idea. I'm not saying that we're in the clear and it's going to be great for everybody. Um, but unfortunately, it's a contractual obligation. So whether it's, we move forward with this type of parking lot or go with a much cheaper option of constructing a parking lot, that's not on me. I'm not the engineer for that part. But Mr. Deeb deemed it necessary for a long-term solution and not just a five-year solution.
Nice. Can, can we go, Mr. Deeb, can we go back out for a bit on just a quick, uh, whatever Councilman Saab was saying, a layover?
So you could do that. Now, Mr. Deeb, Councilman Saab is right. There are different pricing, but it depends on what the specs are. And Mr. Deeb came up with the specs that would last you fifteen to twenty years of the parking lot and not have to go back out and fix it in five to ten years. And he can speak on that because I'm not an engineer.
Thank you.
Council Chair, um, so I believe this design, this actual design that went out to bid was emailed to all of you on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. So the, uh, the way we came up with that design is we cored the existing pavement. We all know the condition of the parking lot. We cored every, of all four areas and determined what is out there. And to say there are cheaper alternatives, yes, we can do it cheaply, but it isn't going to last. We have potholes larger than the section of pavement that we have. So in order to it, to do it properly, we looked at, bless you. So we looked at what, uh, what is the long-term solution? I'm, I'm looking at a twenty-year lease for the facility and a parking lot of, of that, I'm asking for it to, to last twenty years. Uh, so we look at the proper repair. What you have before you is the actual proper repair for that parking lot. It is used heavily. I go over the weekends and this parking lot is busy. And if, if we continue to allow the school to use it, it's going to be busy. And with all the upcoming venues, they're ready to open up, that place is going to be busy. I will not have the opportunity. Can I go back out and, and look for a cheaper alternative? Yes. My goal was to try to finish the construction before the school starts and before, uh, Mr. Isa is ready to open. Um, you know, again, we're not looking for a Band-Aid. Um, you know, there are different Band-Aids, but to, to tell me two or one and a half inch of, of overlay, the potholes are three times that thickness. So, so, I mean, it, it is, you, you know, you want to do a proper repair? That is the, the correct proper repair, in my opinion. I've asked, um, um, professional engineers to core, and, and, and I've reviewed the cores myself. That pavement hasn't been looked at and updated in years. This is the right way to do it. Um, I talked to the, um, you know, the controller about the funding from the start to see what it will take. Uh, you know, aside from the finance, I'm not the finance person, but the arrangement, and, and we bid it out in such a way, and we can, I think I included in your, I included in your, uh, package, uh, the difference why we bid it, we itemized the bid, so you can see what the base bid will be, what the alternates that we are looking for. We're trying to accommodate all the, all the needs of the potential users in that area. Whether it's the, um, um, you know, the banquet facility, whether it's the school, whether it's us for the golf operation, that design accommodates everyone's needs, and it is intended to last as long as the lease would last. And the finance part, I leave, I intentionally did not pick any of the bidders, uh, only because of the speculations and the kickbacks and stuff. You have all qualified bidders. Um, you know, you want to go with low bid, second low bid, whatever, but that's the proper way to go, and that is my professional opinion.
Megan, can I ask you a question before you begin, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
I know we budgeted about seven hundred and fifty thousand for this about two, three years ago. I know it wasn't in unrestricted, but I know it was in our budget three years ago. What happened with that money?
It went back to the general fund at the end of the year.
What did we do with that money when it went to the back into the general fund?
Again, it got spent in union contract negotiations, overtime, all of the things that we have been overspending on every year.
What about fund balance? I thought that's what paid for fund balance.
Again, when the year finishes and you haven't spent the money, the money goes back to fund balance. I did want to add one more thing because, of course, financing is always the concern that we have. So I just wanted to share some estimates of what, um, Jason and Mr. Isa would potentially be paying the city as part of the revenues, because it's a little bit larger than what was mentioned earlier today. So we get ten percent of the green fee revenues, and that's going to be approximately nine thousand five hundred per month. Um, in the summertime, and then it increases in September, October, November, uh, and then it goes back down a little bit. Um, we have ten percent of the golf alcohol sales now that we have the alcohol approved, and hopefully that's going to be around two thousand dollars a month. Uh, we have the concession agreement, um, which we will be getting around three thousand six hundred a month, as well as the rent, which is the sixty thousand per year, five thousand dollars per month. So we're estimating that in revenues, we're going to be getting around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year from the golf course, uh, revenues. So that's not in our current revenues for this budget right now. So that is a revenue that we can add, and it will continue to be there for the following twenty years on the existence of this parking lot. So that's potentially a way that you can try to pay some of that back. Um, but that was just for me to share with you, um, what the revenues are estimated to be moving forward.
Thank you. Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Deeb, whatever the proposal that Councilman Saab mentioned, I know it's a temporary thing, but how long do you think it would last?
Five years.
Is that a five-year thing?
I'm not expecting it to last five years, no. Because, because it, it, look at the conditions of the, of the parking lot. There, I'm not talking about flooding, just the pavement conditions. I have a large vehicle, and I barely can make it. Those potholes are excessive.
No, I'm with you a hundred percent. If we had the money, I mean, all day long, we're approving this, but the thing is, we don't have the money. And hopefully, Mr. Isa would, uh, understand that, you know, we can work together and maybe just, uh, maybe, at least for the next few years, then maybe we can find a permanent solution. A lot of overlay work? I know, totally understand.
Let me hear from Councilwoman Breyer first.
Okay, uh, we're having a lot of cement work done, uh, in the south end on the street, and I don't think we're capping it at two inches.
That's asphalt. That's asphalt. This is asphalt.
All right, well, we've got to have something that's going to last. We've got a twenty-year lease. We want to get something done prior to school opening, and it's got to be done now. And I don't think we should just go half-ass and get something that's less than what we need. We need what he's asking for, and I would recommend that we use Al's Asphalt as the company.
Council Chair?
Yes.
This, uh, project, um, and we can put in a stipulation that the school district be involved, but it's a win for the city. It's a win for the golf course to do the job right. It's a win for the, the school district and the residents. We, we, we want, it's expensive, but any construction job, you can do good, better, best. So I, 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 I think we get it fixed, and it's, it's, it's an investment. We're going to be getting revenue from the golf course as the golf course is up and running. And, and, um, Director Deeb, the, with the, um, fire station hopefully going in, where we're planning on going in, we'll want a durable parking lot, will we not?
No. Would not.
No, that's, that's not where the fire station is.
Forget the fire station.
Council Chair? So, so. Hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Deeb.
So, you know, Mr. Isa, if you want to come up to the podium, just have some stuff on the record, if you don't mind. Um, you know, Mr. Isa's done a phenomenal job with that build-out, and honestly, um, the golf course has never looked as good as it looks. I've got a few questions I just want to put on the record. Mr. Isa, you did submit with your attorney a bid from Al's Asphalt, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're aware that Council Chair here, or myself, or anybody else did not submit this bid on behalf of the city or negotiate behind the city's back or anything, correct?
No.
Okay. I personally sent out a company that's not even on here, and I asked them, the areas where they were bad, the deficiencies in the parking lot. Those can be sectioned and can be repaired, uh, with, you know, separate from the rest of the parking lot. But the whole parking lot can be overlaid, and it's a major savings. Another issue at the golf course that we're not discussing, and it's a major issue, is the back where the creek goes through, uh, the river goes through the back of the building. It's actually deteriorating and sinking. So why spend one point five million dollars on a parking lot when you can do it for a third of the, or a half of the price? And get a metal, uh, a metal structure built in the back to protect the wall from even further erosion. And that's my thing. Yes, the golf course is going to start bringing in revenue, and believe me, we're going to be doing a lot of updating in the future on it because it's part of recreation. There's a lot of grants out there. One thing the city does not have is a grant writer or lobbyist to lobby for the hundreds of millions of dollars that cities around us got, and we got, I think, like three hundred thousand dollars.
Seventy million.
Yeah, seventy million dollars for parks that we got, like three hundred thousand dollars from, whatever it was.
We got forty.
Um, or forty thousand, I'm sorry. I take that back. Um, but yes, we do got to do the parking lot for Mr. Isa, but I just think this is, I think we go with a, uh, with a fix to get it open right now with, we're laying over the parking lot. Have it go back out for bid for that. And, uh, then maybe we start looking at the back issue too, because if we're going to spend that much, we might as well spend it on what's going to actually, you know, fix the issues. Then the second thing is, is that Mr. Isa was doing work in front of his property, everything. We allowed Wayne County to, to destroy the parking lot even further, and then our contractor, Bidiger, that was using the parking lot. You guys say they turned it back to the way it was. No, they destroyed the parking lot even further in those areas. That's where those potholes are at. It's, it's, it seems like a reoccurring thing. Anytime a contractor is done with a project, the project moves on. We did great work on something, something else is always left in the back, something else is damaged, nothing gets done. We got to hold our contractors accountable. And I requested those before and after pictures of that parking lot. I've never seen them. I've never got them. I mean, speak facts. And I asked our council here, the body, not to approve any of these bids. Go back out for bid and just do a two-inch layover and get it approved for Mr. Isa. And honestly, look at the back, uh, the back hillside where it's, where it started corroding to the, into the river there. Thank you.
Council Chair? Mr. Isa, when are you expecting to open?
I'm about like three weeks away.
Three weeks away?
I got events lined up September and on, so it's got to be done. Plus, the school's opening up soon again. We're going to have that same issue we had last year, so.
So even if we go with this bid, I don't think they're going to finish in three weeks.
Right? This one's going to take way more than three weeks.
Wow.
As long as if we can get half of it done and then do half in the other section, I don't care. And I don't care if you. And I don't care if you guys spend a dollar or 2 million. I mean, I want you guys to save money, but at the same time, I need the parking lot fixed. I was supposed to spend 3.5 million. I'm in almost 7 million. I'm not crying, I'm not complaining to you guys. I didn't even say a word to anybody. There's a lot of things that I paid out of my pocket that should have been city expense. And I didn't even confront you guys about it. I just said, just keep going. I mean, I got involved in this, I'm a man of my word, and I'm finishing it. And I'm pretty sure you guys seen what I did to that, to that property. I don't think anybody would ever did what I did to that property, not even the city or even Wayne County would have.
100%.
And hopefully it becomes successful. Now, it could have, it can be a failure, then I'm out.
No, no, I'm sure it's going to be successful.
You know, you guys win, I'm out. You guys got four new buildings on that property that I paid for. So if something happens to me and I walk away, you guys benefit. I don't benefit nothing. I lost 7 million, if God forbid. So I got to be a good operator and run that place right. And with all you guys' support too.
So we have a motion here to-
Council Chair. Yes. Thank you. I have nothing against Mr. Isa or the golf course, anything. My main goal is to take care of the taxpayers' dollars. The money that they, hard-earned money that they earn, they pay their taxes on. The original contract with the golf course, it's, it's got a lot of holes in it. And like I said, it was, it was agreed by almost everyone that it's a very bad contract as far as the city goes. And then there, there's the word maintain. And it's a very important word. And in the contract, a detailed contract, it would say what exactly the meaning of maintain is. And there's nothing in there. Mr. Deeb said he wants to repair the parking lot. Now, there's no word about repair in that contract. It just says maintain. And like I said, maintaining is taking care of it. You got to ask yourself, you want to, as, as council members and fiduciary, fiduciary, people that take care of the taxpayers' money, do you want to do the same thing that you're asking your residents? They have their streets with potholes filled? Do you want to just fill these potholes in the parking lot and do the same thing you're doing to your residents? Or do you want to push your residents aside and say, hey, we're going to redo this parking lot? And if we get some extra money, then we're going to take care of your streets? There's, you know, what's more important is that we could hire a police, a police officer. All he does is sit at stop signs, gives tickets for running stop signs. We could do that with, with that money. You know, we could patch the roads. We could have an ordinance department that's just strictly for rental properties. You know, we could do a lot with that money. And the main thing is this definition of maintain. Maintain is just you keep it going operable. Repair is, once it's down and you have to repair it, replace it, get it back to running condition. Nowhere in this contract does it say anything about repair. It just says maintain. And I think that's going to be the issue. I'm, I'm coming up with a resolution that states the meaning of maintain in this contract. Because there's no meaning to maintain in this contract. So we have the obligation and the right to specify what maintain means. And we also, you know, we also want to know what's the school's involvement is on this. Are they going to, are we redoing that part of the parking lot too? Or is the school going to help us out with some part of the, the parking lot?
Let me ask you, answer that, if you don't mind. The school is completely checked out because when we first approved the contract, we said, Mr. Isa, we want the school to continue to be able to get permission. This was Sue Kaminsky had originally went to Wayne Colony, Wayne Colony granted Riverside to be able to use it. The school was going to use it regardless. But we told the school, please pay for this much of it. We couldn't come up with an agreement. So you know what the school said? We're going to save the $300,000. You guys, we're still going to use it and we're not going to pay for anything.
Really?
Yeah, so now, you know, because we were all like, oh, well, what are we going to get out of the school? What are we going to get out of the school? Instead of looking at public safety and saying, we want to protect the children, we want to protect the schools. I had the administration fighting us and everybody was yelling at us and they're saying, I'm, you know, we're, we're making private meetings and, oh man. One, the city was going to benefit because we would have saved money on the parking lot. And two, we would have, we would have protected our children because our children's lives are in danger and so are, so are our parents. We all represent-
We passed it though.
Yeah.
We passed it.
No, we didn't. We passed a resolution that says, let's have a conversation. The school said, I'm tired of the back and forth with the city. You know, I, I'll tell you this. People feel like when they come to the city council meeting or they speak to your administration, we get here, we give them a, a whole bunch of bull crap and people are like, man, I want nothing to do with Durbin Heights. And when you want to talk about why Durbin Heights is moving away, investors don't want to invest in here. People don't want to come to our city council meetings. People don't want to, people don't want to come here. Because of the things, and I'm not saying you, I'm not saying me, I'm not saying us. But I mean, when, when, when Dr. Mosalem comes here and they pass the ball and here we have our trustee, right? And we said, we want to give you guys money. We want to make things safer for our students. Some people on this council and this administration were like, oh, well, what are we going to get out of this? And what's going to happen with this? If this was a different school district, we would have said, this is for the safety of our children. Let's make sure we're putting our best foot forward. And, and, and we all head away from that.
Every council member spoke highly of child safety.
Said, I want nothing to do with this. I'm still going to maintain it.
I don't understand that. Why didn't they come to us again and say, hey?
They came to us five times.
Every one of us, at the last time it was brought up, every one of us spoke highly of child safety. And it's a great idea. Let's go for it, let's move ahead. And it's the first time, first time I heard that they backed out.
Mrs. Jaxton, here, she yelled at me. You can get up to the microphone if you want and speak.
I, I've, I've never heard anything about it. I would have heard they wanted to back out, say, hey, let's get together, let's get a meeting together, let's work this out.
Well, they backed out. Maybe we should call Joe Mosalem.
Yeah, I didn't know. We should have, we should have got him-
The president of the school board almost got, almost got called out to fight outside of the city council meeting.
I'm just going to say, I'm speaking as a resident, not as a school board member. But we came to this body that-
Four times.
Several times. And council members did say, well, what is the city going to get out of this? When we said that traffic was going to be pulled off of Warren, off of the street, and, and our students would not, and parents would not be letting their kids out onto the middle of Warren, we still heard, well, what is the city going to get out of it? You guys, your responsibility is to the, the residents and the safety of our children. And all we heard over and over and over again was, oh, this isn't a good deal for the city. We're, the, the parents are going to use the parking lot anyway. And it's not fair to Mr. Isa either. And we were trying to come up with a solution for the golf course as well as the safety of the students and the, and the parents, but.
We dropped the ball. We dropped the ball.
And I will say that there are some that may be pleased because, you know, but you know what? It's not that the city, the school district is going to save the money because the money's set aside for a project. And it may have to go towards something different because we couldn't count on this body. So, or maybe not so much this body, but the administration as well. Because I sat here, how many meetings saying, pull it, pull it, we don't want it on the agenda. Now here we are.
Council Chair. Yes, Chair. Yeah. I mean, we were so excited about it. We were talking about different things that we thought of, you know, about drop-off and pickup and everything. I mean, to find out, I know, but to find out that this is like, you know, not going to happen anymore. I mean, it's a shame. I, I never, I don't think I ever mentioned once, hey, what's in it for the city? I just asked, just now, what, is there going to be any involvement with the school district and this parking lot?
I'm sorry, but I beg to differ, Mr. Wenzel. Councilman Wenzel, I beg to differ. You had the biggest issue with it. Multiple times you had said, and you had said, this isn't a, this isn't good, mm.
I, I, I want to say the table, I said, this is not good for the city?
There was concerns about it being good for the city and what the city was going to get.
I'm, I'm not responsible to show, prove that, but if someone's making accusations, I think they should be responsible for proving I said that. I'm, I'm, I was in favor 100% on this.
Yeah, I, I don't think Councilman Wenzel said that, to be honest.
Council Chair.
I also got a $15,000 attorney bill for the school board and parking issue. Who's, who's going to be paying that since we couldn't come to an agreement? I, I was just doing it to make sure it works for both sides. So somebody's got to be responsible for the $15,000 attorney bill.
The mayor's office.
Where is the mayor?
Council Chair.
Yes.
One quick question, is, is it safe to say though, the door is not closed regarding the school district being involved?
Honestly, last I talked to Joe, the door's closed. Because by the time the contractor was going to start and by the time school starts, the construction wouldn't be done. And they, they, they checked out. I don't, you can call him, Councilman Katson, but I want you to know, like, I started getting yelled at by school board members. Hand to God, people started calling me, I said, guys, I'm not, you're the council chairman. I said, I'm, I'm one vote. I can't tell you why Roger was telling the trustee that he wanted to come by. You meet me outside and let's talk outside. And they did talk outside.
Since you brought my name on, Council Chair, I'm going to say that how, you got a charter, follow the charter. No one said you can't do it, but the charter says the administration negotiates. Instead of going behind the administration's back and negotiating on your own, why didn't you follow the procedures of the charter? Let the administration work on the contract that would have done, been done properly and not backhanded or behind the scene. Not 50-year contract, a 20-year contract. Properly negotiated. So please change your narrative before you start accusing anybody of anything.
Point of order.
Guys, let, let Roger finish.
Council Chair.
Let Roger finish. Roger, I'm so sorry.
For now, sir, that's okay.
Are you all set?
For now, yes.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilman Katson next, and then Councilman Saab.
I would be glad to talk to the school superintendent and anyone else. And like I say, it's a win-win situation. But we're, we're getting off the issue. The issue is, do we do the 100% job that's recommended that'll last for 20 years? Or we do less than that?
Well, I, I would, if I had to make a decision today on this, I'd be saying, one, we can't afford to repair. I think you could look at a layover and then you could hope in the next five to 10 years with between a grant writer or some type of, you know, of funding. Maybe so that it's not coming out of the general fund or, or coming out of the fund balance. I mean, that's just me. I would, I, I can't, I can't swallow the one, the million dollar, 1.1 million dollars to tell people, I'm sorry, like, we're going to spend 1.1. Now, look, we did do a lease, Kenfield parking lot at a lease porch. We did, it was in the contract. This is no different, this is in the contract. But we did not do a full repair where we ripped out all of Kenfield. No, we didn't. They did, they did a two-inch layover, that's what they did. Because the first thing when I saw this, I picked up the phone, I said, hey, what was done over here? He said, you had a layover done. I said, okay, thank you.
Council Chair. I just want to, I just, nobody wants to say the truth about why the administration was, was had an iron fist against this. They just bluntly don't like Dr. Joe Mosalem. Everybody knows that, the mayor cannot see eye to eye with him. And the mayor is the one that kept pushing it. We're not going to get it approved, we're not going to do nothing. And this is how much this administration actually cares about safety. The Beach Daily and Lawrence Crosswalk, for three years, we've been going, going, going. Today it's on the agenda. The Joey Smith Fund that we had. You want to talk about public safety, this is why nothing gets accomplished. The administration is the roadblock. We approved, we went to the, we said here, yes, we approved this to go to the administration. I mean, I mean, for the past two years, we've asked Roger for one resolution. Has he ever bought it forward in ordinance? No.
You didn't even have a vote from the school board approving negotiations in the contract.
They need us to approve it to get a vote from the school board.
Before you speak, sir, I think you should get your facts correct and straight. And not keep talking out of your ear without any kind of substance or manner of backing up what you're saying. There's nothing there, sir.
I'm going to let Councilman Saab finish and I'll let you respond, please.
Thank you, sir.
Once you speak facts and stop making false allegations.
I speak facts, you don't know. You make up your lies as you go along, sir.
You don't know what facts are.
Nice.
Main issue is public safety and they want to run away from it.
Councilman, please. Guys, come on, we're, we're, we're getting way out of topic over here. Let's, let's get back to here. Here, there's a motion on the table, motion made by Councilman Katson, seconded by Councilman Saab. All in favor to allow for this to be passed, I don't know, nobody was chosen. So, so are we-
That's a problem, that's, that was-
Council Chair.
This is the craziest thing I've ever seen. Councilman? Yes. Yeah, like, I think, let's just refer it back for more bids for the, whatever Councilman Saab proposed. But I do, I mean, we have a, we have a job here, we have to take care of that parking lot. I know Councilman Wenzel kept saying maintaining, maintaining. The city has responsibility to maintain city streets. At the one point, sometimes they have to replace them. So it's our job to maintain the parking lot in any means possible. At this time, we don't have the money. Let's get bids for whatever Councilman Saab proposed and let's compare them and let's jump on this. It's already been like 45 minutes discussing this and we're sitting still. Let's fall on, let's take it back to the administration, ask them for more bids, and let's move on. No, 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 no. Let's go out for bids for a two-inch layover. Whatever the word is. Correct, but, but, I mean, this, whatever this bid right now, let's just table it and ask the administration to go for bids for a lay, layover. Okay, so would you like to refer this back to administration to go out for bid for a two-inch layover? Yes. Uh, no, it starts with Madam, Madam. No, no, I mean, he did. Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Katson.
Council, no. Oh, it's Councilwoman Katson, I'm sorry, I thought it was Councilwoman Breyer. I was reading 7A, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Oh, you couldn't call me, your wife, to find out?
Okay, can, would you like to refer this back to administration? To go out, re-out for bid for a two-inch layover? If I'm using the right terms. Motion made by Councilman Katson, can I get a second by Councilman Saab? Okay, this is to refer this back to administration to not approve this and to go out for bid for a two-inch layover. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those are the points.
No.
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please take a look.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
No.
Tom Wenzel.
No.
Robert Katson.
Yes.
Moby Doan.
Yes, and I don't think this should be hard since they all have already inspected this parking lot. I'm sure this would just be easy peasy for them to just look over this. We could probably even get bids by our next city council meeting.
I'm not getting involved in any bids.
Council Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
That doesn't help Mr. Isa with his opening.
Yeah, it does.
If you start all over again, he's not going to be able to open soon. And without the school's participation, it won't be done correctly.
The layover will not take as much as the school.
Yeah, layovers take-
And it won't last as long either.
No, madam clerk, but we don't, we don't have that type of money.
We have a 20-year lease at stake.
I know, but Councilwoman, Council Chair, but Councilman, we don't have the money. I know Matty mentioned that we have 2.2 by the end of last fiscal year. I would really like to know, what's the number right now? I don't know if the treasurer or somebody, what's our fund balance at this moment? Like, two weeks after the start of the new fiscal year? Actually, three weeks. I mean, we can approve this all day long, but if you don't have the money, how are you going to pay the people?
So, the fund balance was 2.2 million dollars as of last year, right? Approximately.
Yep.
The fund balances are rolling balance, meaning that depending on your spending, it's going to vary. However, at this time, the fund balance is going to be higher due to the collection of taxes. As we get through the year, at, at the end of the year, it's going to go back down to 2.2 million dollars. So right now, after the taxes get dispersed to the general fund and other funds, you should, you should see a higher fund balance than 2.2 million dollars. However, because the taxes are sort of front-loaded in the beginning of a fiscal year, those taxes are meant to be spent throughout the fiscal year through the budget that we had. And our budget is right about even in terms of revenues and expenses. So as long as we don't go way overboard on expenses in terms of overtime, we should be expecting the same exact fund balance at the end of next fiscal year. At, at the end of this fiscal year that we're currently in.
I know, but we didn't expect over a million dollars just for speculation.
Well, the idea was that the school be involved in the funding.
Yes.
Well, there's no school now.
Well, there's no school now.
If that's not available, then I can't speak on that.
Yeah. And I don't know, maybe some of the council members can call the superintendent. You guys should. I recommend you all to call the superintendent. I'm done being the middleman. I was getting yelled at by Roger, I was getting yelled at by emails, I was getting emails, I was getting yelled at from the mayor.
I understand, Councilor Chair.
Madam Clerk, you got, everybody, I was getting attacked from every app.
So I do wanna make something clear. As the Chief of Staff stated, we are gonna get some sort of revenue stream. It's not gonna be a 50-year or 100-year payback period, it's gonna look about seven- to 10-year payback period.
Payback for what? Sorry.
Like, in terms of the cost of the project.
For the investment.
Because we're getting 100 to 125 a year in terms of revenue, meaning that if we spend, if the school can help cover the costs, we're only gonna be spending about 700,000 to 750,000, depending on who you choose.
Okay, okay, guys, we have a meeting.
No, I understand.
Just saying what I had.
Thank you. I also, thank you. Let's go up over here. Next up, we got reports from the city officials.
Councilor Chair, real quickly, can we, can we request a meeting with the school board?
I will, I'll meet you and Joe Mosallem in a text, and we can go meet him. Okay. But he's not happy with us.
I'd like to talk to him. I haven't talked to him since our last meeting on the subject.
Okay. Chief of Staff Hernandez, renewal of Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, property and liability coverage e-proposal, July 1, 2025 to July 1, 2026.
Councilor Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and accept renewal of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, known as MMRMA, property and liability coverage e-proposal for the period of July 1, 2025 to July 1, 2026. In addition, authorize Chief of Staff Hernandez to electronically sign, as may be appropriate, on behalf of the city. Additionally, the city approves a payment of 1,599,795 to the MMRMA for the city's annual contributions stemming from the city's approval and acceptance of this proposal. Hey, guys, let me finish. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment amounts toward the city's annual contributions, with the total amount of these payments not to exceed 1,599,795. Furthermore, with respect to the net asset distribution, 1,019,499 option, the city chooses to deposit in its bank account 700,319,499, which will be rolled into the MMRMA retention fund. These transfers will be in the form of an electronic funds transfer. The city council authorizes Chief of Staff Hernandez to complete the net asset distribution option form accordingly, and authorizes Chief of Staff Hernandez to sign this form electronically on behalf of the city, as the city's member representation is outlined in 9A.
Second. Councilor Chair.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Sob.
I just wanna know...
Any discussion?
Yes.
Any discussion on that?
Yes.
Smile.
Um, why is the Chief of Staff signing this in her electronic signature? This, we've asked multiple times, that physically, on such things, that the mayor's signature has to be on these documents.
Authorized by the Chief of Staff Hernandez to electronically sign as be the approval on behalf of the...
And then it says here, "Provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense." And then at the bottom, the last sentence says, "The city council authorizes the Chief of Staff Hernandez to complete the net asset." And authorize the Chief of Staff Hernandez to sign the form electronically on behalf of the city, as the city's member representative.
Well, there's, there has to be a member representative for the MMRMA, and for the last four years, right, four years, Mariana?
The council has appointed me about four and a half years ago.
So you had to get appointed first, and it couldn't be the mayor or a city council member. So the Chief of Staff was actually appointed, that. And this was a discussion we had with, like, Ray and David, all former council members around here. But it was a little controversial at the time. They explained it, and that's why she is... But as far as being the electronically signed, you can also say where it has, that has to be by the, you can say the mayor on that.
The electronically portion is because the MMRMA system requires an electronic signature. So back when we originally started doing that, that was one of those particular signatures that requires it to be an electronic system signature.
Thank you, Mariana.
I do have two corrections to make. I do apologize for that. The numbers in the motion are incorrect. The total contribution for the coverage period is 1,645,254.
Can we repeat it again?
If you look at the backup, the backup actually has the correct numbers.
Are you with MMRMA, sir?
Yes, this is Tim McClory. He is...
We'd love to hear from you.
Sorry, can I, can I give you my second correction? Before he comes up? The second correction is with regards to the net asset distribution, which for this period is going to be 744,692. And this particular year, as I had mentioned during budget season, we weren't gonna get any of the net asset distribution. We were gonna put it all into our MMRMA portion.
Because we soaked up all that we got, right?
We have been taking it for the past five years. So yeah, it's time to get back some to, to the administration.
I'm sorry, Mariana, say that number again, 7...
46.
44692.
Okay, Mariana, you go now. 7...
744692.
692, okay. So I guess the two numbers, the bottom two, they should differ now, too. The 700 and the 319. You know exactly how they're split?
We're not splitting it. So there will not be a split. We will just put the full 700 into, rolled into the MMRMA retention fund.
Was there a comptroller to say about that?
He didn't budget for it. So again, I warned everybody that we weren't planning on getting any money from the MMRMA disbursements this year during the budget season. So it's, it's not accounted for in revenue, so it doesn't affect at all what our budget would look like.
It's a wash.
Correct. All right, and yes, Tim McClory is here, who's our MMRMA representative, in case you had any questions for him in particular.
I got a bunch of questions.
Okay, I know that last year, you requested a study session that never came through, so I asked him to attend the meeting today in case you had questions.
Thank you, Mariana, that was very kind of you. Great, great work as a Chief of Staff. Thank you. How you doing, Tim?
Good, how are you?
Councilman Sob's got a lot to say. What I will tell you is...
I can't wait to hear from him.
When he's done, Councilman Wenzel's got a lot to say.
Okay, let's hear it.
Hear from the two. Go ahead.
So, Tim, welcome to our council meeting. I do have, I do have, honestly, a few very important questions. I don't know if you can answer those or not.
Okay, I'll do my best.
You're a representative, in what capacity?
I am your risk manager.
Okay.
In other words, I kinda like an insurance agent, but with...
So do you have a say in the attorneys that are picked to represent the city?
I do not. I'm not related, I'm not in at all, I'm not involved at all with the, with the selection of legal counsel or, or claims of any...
It's more, at least, I knew Mike Maligan.
Yeah, Mike Maligan, I took over this account from Mike Maligan, who retired, so...
Welcome to Dearborn Heights. You like this city council meeting, huh?
Can't say it's not exciting.
That's Angel Verdenius, by the way.
Right.
Um, Tim, who do we, can I, can we get an email or something on who oversees that area?
Certainly. It would be our Director of Claims, it would be Stark and Cade.
Director of Claims?
Yep.
And what's the name?
Director of Claims and Legal Services, her name is, her name is Star.
Star.
Kincade. And I'll be happy to, happy to get the contact information to, to Mariana, so you can forward it to council.
That's, why don't you do this? Why don't you share your email address with us, and we'll get in contact.
I knew you were gonna ask that question.
I can give you my card, too.
It's in the first page of the contract, which you have already...
Right.
Okay. I'm asking for a test. I'll trade you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else need a card?
No. I'm sure Councilman Wenzel, go ahead, Councilman.
I'll get one for you.
You'd like one?
Tom, you got it?
I'll get it, yeah.
No, I see, you want an...
How many do you have there? Enough for everybody?
I mean, his email's right here, Councilman.
Yeah, we're talking about our contribution, and as far as who picks legal counsel, that's a separate issue regarding the city paying into this multi-layered system of our liability protection.
Say that again?
I say, the issue regarding what attorney or law firm gets picked to defend these cases is separate. What we're talking about today, I believe, is the city's contribution to, and you will speak to, I think...
It's, it's your annual renewal, annual, sure, annual property casualty renewal, which we cover your property, all your property claims and all your liability claims.
And, and this was a system set up by, amongst others, Owen Cummings and Corinne McClory, to lower our insurance costs, because in the 80s, cities, their liability insurance was out of sight.
Yeah, you have, you have a very astute understanding of how we were born. We were born out of a very similar market as today. We've all seen our deductibles go up on our homeowners and, and our businesses, and premiums don't seem to come down when our deductibles go up. We call this a hard insurance market. Back in 1979, 1980, insurance companies, commercial insurance companies, were canceling on municipalities. They didn't wanna cover anybody with the speeding car, with lights, guns. They didn't wanna have anything to do with municipal, with the municipal exposure. So that's how we were born. We were born out of that market. We were formed by municipalities, for municipalities, and our territory is just Michigan. And, you know, our, our founding fathers, there were three members, Redford Township, neighborhood of yours, Livingston County, and the city of Ishbemig. So we had a township, a county, and a city, and also the Ishbemigs and the UP. So we had the entire state. We started out with three members. You guys joined in 1981. It's been a great relationship. We really value our risk, our risk management partnership with the city of Dearborn Heights. You know, we're an alternative, we're a non-for-profit, which is why you're getting back a net asset distribution in the amount of 744-plus thousand dollars this year. When there's money to be had, our money is given back to our membership, right, in the form of a net asset distribution. Our Board of Directors are people just like yourselves, from our members. They sit at the top of our flow chart, and all decisions are member-driven. So we, you know, as it relates to commercial insurance carriers, they're for-profit. They're trying to make a profit for their stockholders. We don't have that. Our stockholders, our members, more, I guess, likened to a credit union, or a mutual, a mutual insurance company, where the success of the organization, the members benefit, so...
Thank you, sir. Any more questions from us, sir?
Any relation to the McClory and Cummings McClory?
That would be my dad. My dad helped...
No kidding.
My dad helped write Public Act 138, which enables this whole thing to exist, so him and his law partner.
So your sister is a lawyer, correct?
My sister is a lawyer. Yes, she is.
Thank you.
We got a lot of attorneys, that's why I ended up over here, not being at...
Any, any more questions from council members?
Council.
Any more discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Sure. All right, guys, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer. Yes. The numbers.
So, can we go down to additionally, the city approves, Ray, you watch, okay, the payment of 1,645,254 to the MMRMA for the city contribution stemming from the city's approval and acceptance of the proposal. Moreover, Mayor auth... Hold on a second, I lost this. Moreover, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued not to exceed 1,645,254. Furthermore, with respect to the net asset distribution, that would be 744,692. Option, and then that next line's gonna be crossed off, option will be rolled into MMRMA retention fund. And I think the rest, everything else, just so for clarification.
Yep. Motion made by...
So moved.
Council chair is all moved.
Yeah.
Is this money budgeted?
It's a wash. So this is the money you give, or this is the money we owe, so it's just a wash.
It is budgeted as well. There is a general ledger number 101200 for insurance specifically.
Okay, I didn't see it in there where the money's coming from in that motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it's a wash, just so you know that. So the expense and the revenue are washing itself. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to highlight one little thing. On your first page, you're gonna notice RAP grants right under your net asset distribution. Last year, we actually got 145,863,000 from MMRMA for grants for our police department and IT. So in total, in our lifespan with MMRMA since the 80s, we've only received 334,000 in grants. But this year, we got almost half of that. So the city has truly been doing well at asking for reimbursement for, for different security grants that they have for us to make the city safer. So I just wanted to congratulate the police department and the IT department for getting the city reimbursed for all of these grants.
Thank you.
So, Councilman, just to make it easy, we owe them 1,645,000. We made 744,000. We put it back, so basically, we still owe them like 900, almost 900,000. Correct?
No. So we owe them the 1,645. That is our annual coverage for it.
Correct.
On top of that, we get a net asset distribution of 744, which we're choosing to keep in the balance of MMRMA.
I mean, instead of taking that money, we kept it there, but if you take the 700 out of the 1.6, you still owe about 900,000.
Yes.
That's why, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that one more card, ended here, so...
All right.
Another card?
Okay, sure.
One more card. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Perfect.
Next up...
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Thank you, sir.
Well, you're gonna get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. Are you?
And he's a neighbor, he's in Livonia.
And he's super willing to come for a study session if he would like to do so.
If you come with a Director of Legal Claims, I'd love to have a study session.
Yeah, any study session you want with regards to MMRMA, we can schedule that.
Thank you, Chief of Staff.
Yeah, Councilor Chair, and I, I didn't mean to silence or anything Councilman Sob's comments, but just, it's, it's a important system. The city saves a lot of money by, with MMRMA.
Thank you. I also do wanna recognize our police officers that are here with us today, and all that attend our council meetings, and so I just want to give them a round of applause and thank them for our services. Mr. Banzi here is actually the number-one officer in the state of Michigan for pulling over individuals with DUI. You know, I, I wanna recognize him. He's a Dearborn Heights resident. He was, he went to elementary school, middle school, and high school here in Dearborn He's a Dearborn Heights resident. He was, he went to elementary school, middle school, and high school here in Dearborn Heights. I just happen to be a rural operator on the block from my parents' home, so we were neighbors. We actually rode the bus together. And to see the young man that he's grown up to be representing the city of Dearborn Heights, congratulations, Mr. Banzi. Thank you. Next up, we have city engineer, deep drinking water state revolving fund and clean water state revolving fund project. Amendment, Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment for the signed contracts for the drinking water state revolving fund and the clean water state revolving fund project as outlined in nine dash P.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? I will say, I'm sorry Mr. Deep left. I know this is something he wanted to see get passed. I thank you for Vaughn, and I know that we had a good study session here where we were able to go into the depths and the details of the great things that this payment and the clean waters revolving fund project put forward. And so I'm glad that we were able to kinda clear the air, go through the presentation, hopefully this gets passed tonight. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is Comptroller's Office, Michigan Department of Transportation, MDA grant agreement on Beach Daily Road and Lawrence Street crosswalk.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize an acceptance of the Michigan Department of Transportation MDA grant agreement provided and authorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the agreement. On behalf of the city, in addition, the mayor and the comptroller or the clerk to sign necessary warrants related to this project and the treasurer to issue payment out of the safe routes to school expense GL account number 101440981014, of which the current budget is 145,780 dollars as outlined in nine C.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Congratulations on this. Mr. Deep actually was just telling us the other day that we were gonna receive the grant for the Beach Daily and Lawrence Street crosswalk, and again, he's not here for that, and congratulations, Mr. Deep. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we also have Mr. DeBajin here today. If we can give him a round of applause. Next up is Comptroller's Office, new position, water billing supervisor.
Council chair.
Councilman Conson?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the addition of a new employee in the water billing department to be paid out of the water fund as outlined in nine D.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Council chair. Honestly, I've asked for the water department to have a review multiple times. I don't think we should hire anybody in the water department. People should honestly be getting fired from the water department. As much as emails I've sent to the comptroller and to the administration, the way residents are disrespected and treated is absolutely absurd. And I've asked, as the interim comptroller and administration, over and over and over and over and over, the only thing we hear is that you have water leaks? I can't help you in the hang up the phones. I asked you in an email, are the calls recorded in the water department?
Are calls are being allowed to be recorded for quality assurance?
The calls are not recorded to my knowledge. I will reach out to the IT director.
Instead of hiring an employee, we can use, we can use money from the water fund for that department. I want those calls recorded. Because what I had to go through this past week with a resident, because one of your employees, city employees, that reports to you, directly hung up on her, was pregnant. The city shut off the water to go back and to just tell her, I can't deal with this and hang up on her, is unacceptable.
I understand it's unacceptable, Councilman Saab. The point of the water billing supervisor is to have somebody on site to deal with these issues. The problem is the union employees in that department don't have a supervisor on site that can handle them in a timely manner. I am in a budget, I'm in meetings with the police officers, I'm in meetings with HR, I'm in meetings with the chief of staff, I'm in meetings with an engineer. I come back to my desk, five sticky notes, this person's upset, this person's upset. I get pulled into the office by the clerks, who's like, yeah, this person called me. The problem I'm having is the point of this employee is not because, oh, these employees aren't doing their jobs and stuff like that. The point of this employee is to ensure that the department has somebody there that has the customer service knowledge, the ability to de-escalate situations and offer resolutions to the residents in a more timely manner. The whole idea of a water billing supervisor is to delegate duties from the comptroller's office so that we can actually provide better services to the residents. I cannot, as the comptroller, be there in the water department saying, okay, the resident was right, my employee is wrong. I'm hearing two sides of the story. My employee comes in and says, hey, the resident said this to me. You come to me and say, well, the resident said that to her. Then I'm stuck in the middle playing investigating, like an investigating officer.
So, so Mr. Bedu, let me tell you something quickly, to be honest with you. Instead of us hiring any more employees in the water department,
Yes.
I think you should have a plan on what the department, where the deficiencies are.
I told you that.
Maybe some, no, no, some, no, no. Hiring another person is the last thing that, right now, that department needs. Because truly, I believe, if, and if we're able to do this, to contract to work out 100%. Because the way, the way, hold on, I don't care about unions right now or anything. When resident safety is put at risk because somebody can't deal with it and hangs up the phone, it's an issue.
Keep in mind-
And I'm not talking just as a councilman.
Let him finish.
No, no, I'm not talking as a councilman. I'm not only talking, and I sent you an email with that.
And I responded to it.
If they're not happy with their jobs, quit.
The solution to get somebody-
Mr. Constant, please. The problem, again, and I keep, and I keep emailing you about these same exact issues with the water department, nothing has changed. By you hiring other people with no management oversight or a plan on how you're gonna execute this or how things are gonna improve, it's just wasting more taxpayer money. When taxpayers are getting zero answers.
Councilman Saab, the water billing supervisor is a management position. That's the manager that's gonna solve the issues at hand.
Hey, guys.
The problem I'm having, no, you let him speak, let me speak. That's not fair, council chair. You always do that to me.
Go ahead.
Council chair. Go ahead.
The water billing supervisor is a non-union position. It's a manager position. Meaning that they have the right to delegate duties and write people up if necessary. The whole idea is to get the person in there so that they can oversee the department, which you guys have said has deficiencies and has issues with customer service and residents complaining about how rude the employees are, which I cannot attest to because I am not there in the office. If the resident says one story and my employee says another story, how am I gonna- Yeah, so the whole point of water billing supervisor is to get a manager in place, a non-union person, that has the ability to write people up as well as support the staff in case a resident does get irritated and has the customer service and the de-escalation techniques to resolve issues.
Thank you, council chair.
I just wanna add one thing real quick. I'm gonna go to Councilman Constant and I'll go to Councilman Ahmad. Before we can hire a non-union employee position right now, there's a new administration coming in, hopefully in November, or in December, I'm sorry. Let them assess and figure out what they need to do with that department. And the reality is, one of the reasons why you can't attest to any of this is because you're supposed to be the deputy comptroller. Hang on one second, please. You're supposed to be the deputy comptroller. You're not, you should not be getting pulled in to a bunch of different meetings, but because we don't have a comptroller, you're acting as the interim comptroller and you're not in your seat because you're having to go do the things as a comptroller. The reality is, I had a conversation with some of the water department employees and they said, deputy comptroller used to always take care of these issues. But because we don't have a deputy comptroller, because the deputy comptroller's acting as the interim comptroller, yeah, you're gonna have all of these issues, so we can't just like- The city needs to hire a comptroller. The city doesn't need to hire a new position and then also hire a comptroller.
I'm sorry, so, council chair, we are at a point where we spent a half a million dollars on Plant Moran, okay? A deputy comptroller is an accountant, finance position. Usually, those people are not customer service oriented. You're not gonna find somebody that's multiversical that can handle both areas of customer service as well as finance the way that I can do it, okay? My goal is to delineate the water billing as by itself, the comptroller by themselves, so the comptroller can focus on removing the task off of Plant Moran's plate so we can reduce their-
So are we getting rid of the deputy comptroller?
No. What I'm, I'm reassigning duties of the deputy comptroller, the comptroller, the accountant, the accounts payable clerk, to better suit the department. If the deputy comptroller can save five hours a week of oversight on the water billing, you save a thousand dollars from Plant Moran. Because that five hours can say, hey, Plant Moran, give me five hours worth of work, okay? The idea is to create a hierarchy that establishes management and then a supervisor as a comptroller and allows people to have direct duties responsible for, that they are responsible for.
Look, I don't, I don't really disagree with you, actually, Matty. I think you make a really good point. I really do. But the truth is, I hear this is just something that's quickly tossed over here. Nothing is really, I kind of, no management is coming to you on this. I'm sorry, but for me, I'm not ready to move forward until one, we can budget for this and we can see the future of this department. Because one, at the end of the day, we're still paying comptr-, uh, Plant Moran and GAB. Every single person here wants Plant Moran and GAB gone.
I understand that.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Councilman Constant and then I'm gonna go to Councilman Ahmad. Councilman Constant, go ahead.
I, I, what I've heard, what I know, I've tried to talk to Matty or whoever the mayor's office about water bills. It's a very needed position. What Matty says makes sense. There's nobody to really supervise or no system for the people in the, the workers in the water department. The position will pay for itself. We've had so many problems with water bills going out, with water bills supposedly for, that are supposed to be for two months, for six months period. It's, it's, and to say to Matty, well, we're not gonna fill this position because the water department is not running smoothly, the water department, people are rude, people are treating residents rude. That, that's the exact opposite. There's no logic in that. You, you, you get the manpower, you hire someone to help the residents and help get these water bills straightened out. Council chair.
Uh, it's Councilman Ahmad now. Thank you, Council chair. Matty, you make, you make complete sense. I mean, I'm with you. I mean, you need the help. But my concern here first, I'm looking at the summary, it doesn't say how much is the pay.
Yeah, that was-
We don't have a budget for it. That's another thing. And my other question is, once we have a comptroller, are you able to supervise the water department as a deputy comptroller?
Okay.
The comptroller will make that decision.
Let me make something clear.
I think he just said the deputy-
Whether the deputy comptroller is able to or not able to is not the point.
Is it one of the job descriptions, the deputy comptroller to supervise the department?
It's kind of, it's the job description, however, what I'm trying to say is in order to move the city forward and delineate the finance function from the water billing function, the deputy comptroller should not be the person to oversee the water department. Especially since the deputy comptroller's office is across the hall, so they cannot be on site 24/7. The idea is, the comptroller is the person that oversees the entire city's budget, deals with all the meetings, deals with the budget, deals with auto prep. So for the most part, the comptroller is not really the department head in the comptroller's department. They are a public figure front-facing to the council. They are not in the office that much. The deputy comptroller can focus on overseeing the accountant, the payroll clerk, and accounts payable, which gives them three employees in that office. Then you have the water billing supervisor. They see the biller, the billing coordinator, and the billing customer service clerk. It's, it's, I'm telling you right now, if you want the city to move forward, you need to reassess the department structures. I've said this before and I'm trying to come-
I like, I like your reasoning, Matty, 100%.
I love his reasoning.
But I just, we need to know how much is the pay, where are we getting the money from?
My idea was, the pay would be anywhere from 62 to 70,000. I don't know exactly what you guys would approve. It would be a manager position and it comes from water fund. So there isn't gonna be a effect on general fund balance. I'm just saying, the problem I have with this city, and I've seen this the past few years, is people are afraid to change. People are afraid to implement new policies. I come in here, I've worked under multiple comptrollers, I keep giving my ideas, and right when I get something going, the comptroller quits. So, I, hopefully, I'm not gonna be quitting anytime soon, and my idea is, hey, I have these policies in mind, I'm gonna bring them in front of you. You decide whether you wanna keep and move forward with them. And I, I, as a comptroller, although with techni-, that position technically is just an employee position, I feel like I have a fiduciary responsibility to the city. I will work as many hours as needed. I'll work any amount of days as needed. I'll work overtime as needed without the pay. Because I believe that I can make the city move forward. But at the same time, God forbid that I leave the city or something happens to me. Who do you have to run this department? What I'm doing is setting this department up for success.
One second, Conson.
You have to have multiple people under the comptroller so that in the event that a comptroller leaves or a deputy comptroller leaves, you have people under there that can hold down the fort while the city finds employees in place of that.
Thank you. Did you, I'm sorry, Conson, before, did you do your own research, like, about the position, like?
I've already did, most-
So what do you, what kind of pay do you recommend?
I recommend 65 to 70,000, somewhere around there. Which is just, that's the lower end of a manager, but that's pretty much what we're asking of this position. It's just oversight, supervision, and assisting the residents that have issues that the clerks in the office are not able to resolve themselves.
Okay, I like that. Council chair.
I'm gonna go to Councilman Wontal first. Thank you, council chair. One of my questions was the pay, and I just got answered. The other one was, in the back of it, doesn't say what qualifications this person needs. He said CPA at one point, you know. I mean, there's, there's no qualifications, this-
It's an admin management position.
Yeah, and-
The problem is qualifications are always up in the air. If you find a candidate that has-
CPA for 65,000.
No, no, you don't need a CPA.
No, he mentioned being a CPA. He said that, you know.
He said in the comptroller's office. That's their position, not to oversee another department.
Alright. No, I'm, in theory, this is good, but I think we should, first, if we're gonna okay this money, we should take the proportional amount for a month or two months, hire an outside person, come in and investigate the water department. Find out what's going on, then hire a person.
This guy knows what he's talking about.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we should do. I mean, if we're gonna okay 65,000, let's take two or three months of that pay, hire a company or an individual, come in, do a complete investigation of the water department. And then when we're all done, if that person says, we do need a supervisor, then we can do that. I mean, the bottom line is, we need to investigate the water. We don't need another person in there to investigate, maybe, down the line. I mean, it'd just be another person to investigate. I mean, let's, let's take our ducks in a row here and do things in order.
Yeah, yeah, I think, Councilman Wontal, I agree with you. There needs to be some type of plan of action. The problem is, I'm gonna tell you my issue is, I'm not ready for this administration to hire somebody to investigate somebody.
It's not an investigation.
We could hire him.
Yeah.
We could even know what the-
But, but, but what I, I do agree though with Matty on certain things. You are gonna need somebody that's gonna be able to, look, we have constant phone calls about our water. I, every day, every single day, I take a call about somebody that's got an issue with their water. And every day I gotta pick up the phone, I gotta wait in line, I gotta try to call somebody. I start calling Matty, I start calling John Dance, I start, I just start calling, who can I get on the phone with? Then I transfer him over to, but there's really not a specific, I think I've even called the clerk. I said, hey, can you help this person out with their water bill? Like, it's a constant issue. So I do think eventually, hang on, Matty, please, I do believe that he's right. You do need to have somebody that's designated overseeing complaints from the residents regarding the water issue that can continue to take a look at that.
Yeah.
But, I, I don't, I don't think this is the time for it now. I'm gonna go to Councilwoman-
Well, let me finish though. I mean, you gotta realize, if we do hire this person, this administration is gonna hire this person.
100%.
So, you know, if anything, we put this off to the first of the year.
Yep. Let's, I'm gonna go ahead with Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell.
Yeah, Mike, I'm going from my past experience. I worked for AT&amp;T and most of my career I was on the phone. We were recorded non-stop.
Yeah.
If a customer called back and said, I had a problem, you have notes in the system, you know, when they talk to them, they go back and they hold what was called the AMA tapes. And listen, if the person did disrespect the customer, they were fired. It sounds right now that they need customer service training. It seems to be an issue. They need to know how to de-escalate and how to talk to the customer, not take it personal, because they're not calling to talk, you know, to, to tell them off, they're just upset, but they're not upset with them. So they need to understand that side of it too. It's not about them as a person, it's about something that's happening to them that they have no control of. And neither does the water department necessarily either. With the proper training, I think you could turn the department around. That's where you need to start, is training them how to talk to the customer and de-escalate. And I think that with, also too, listen in on them. Do you ever sit down maybe for 15 minutes and listen and see how they talk to the customers and how they handle it? And maybe suggest how they can de-escalate? Maybe they've never been given those skills. They might not know how. As a training, you have to,
Yeah.
you know.
Council chair. Yep. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Calm down, guys. Councilwoman, are you all set here?
Is there any training that they're given when they got the job to deal with customers, the public? The public's difficult.
So, the point of the job that I'm, had is-
The question she's asking you for.
I'm talking about the ones that are in there now.
Yes, HR had a customer service training for all of our clerical, public-facing employees.
How often do they renew it? Like, how many?
We did it about a year and a half ago. They're probably due for another one.
Probably like every six months would be a little bit better to remind them of what they're supposed to do.
We have never had a budget for training for citywide scale until about a year ago. We have a small budget in the HR department for these types of trainings, but yes, we agree that there's more training that's necessary in the city. We're limited to about one or two a year right now just because of the funding resources we have.
Because of the issues, could we take it out of the water budget because it's for the water department and give them more training than?
We could segregate a training just for water and take it from water, but this position is coming from the water department.
I think if they had the right guidance, they could be turned around.
Yes. And, and I do wanna add, just from personal experience of being here for, for the four years as well, this has nothing to do with Matty as the comptroller. As you all have mentioned, this has been an ongoing issue in the department for multiple years. We have had multiple meetings with the employees there. There was a lot of turnover in the water billing department for the past three years. I think this is the first six-month period where we've had some consistency, where the employees haven't changed. So the supervisor would also help with the transition of information and training because the people that we used to have that were very knowledgeable in the water department are no longer available to do those trainings for the new employees. So again, there, there's a transition that went missing for a little bit, and Matty took on that role when he came in. So again, right now, he is very knowledgeable and sharing that information with somebody else that could be there full-time would be very beneficial for the city. So again, this isn't something that is a spur of a moment, like, oh, we're having issues now. We've been considering it for a long time. Matty has recommended it for multiple years, but for one reason or another, again, the controllers always believe, no, we can fix it with time. But then time kept going and it never got fixed. So now this is a different alternative that he's proposing.
Quite honestly, I don't think bringing in a supervisor who probably is not trained in that area themselves is gonna work as much as getting somebody that's professional, that can teach them how to speak with the public. Like I said, billing, I worked in billing at one point, and I always said it was never a positive call. There's always something wrong and that's why they're calling you. Nobody's gonna call you and say, my water bill's great this month, thank you and have a nice day. You'll never hear that. You have to figure out what's wrong. You know, either they didn't use the water, they can't pay the bill, their water's off, you know, it's been put on their taxes. Something's gonna always be wrong in that call, and that's a hard position to be in.
And I understand. So the water billing supervisor is going to have the qualifications, I know weren't listed in there, but they have to have previous managerial experience, previous customer service experience, as well as knowledge in the BSNA utility billing system, because that's one of the sticking points that I wish to have in somebody in that position, is they must know the system inside and out.
Do you guys have somebody in mind?
No.
Council chair.
As much as you believe that this administration's not gonna hire somebody that's qualified, I-
I never said that. Why are you adding words in my mouth, sir? Come on, man, point of order.
I mean, council chair, you-
Come on, add your point of order.
Thank you, council chair. I'm gonna go to Councilman Constant. We're getting, so, what the position is, somebody to help supervise and bring in new employees, train them, be responsible for those employees in the water department.
Yeah.
Separate from that, separate from, we want all our city employees, the people in the building department, water department, trained, trained in customer service. But that, the, the, the billing for the water department is a mess.
I'm well aware of that, and that's part of the reason why this supervisor is in place.
When the city was getting written up because we, the, the new treasurer was not reconciling our bank accounts, we, Plant Moran came in and they gave the reconciling of the bank accounts, they took it away from the treasurer's office, gave it to the comptroller, okay? We, it's, it's a needed position.
I think it's time, I think guys, we're gonna take this to a vote. There's been a lot of back and forth. I'm gonna give, it's really, it's a lot of back and forth. I think we just need to take this to a vote. And, and, you know, personally, like, we've spent almost 37 minutes on this, guys. Please, we spent 45 minutes on the golf course, 37 minutes on this. On two things, we spent over an hour.
Council chair. I just, sorry, I've asked five times.
Okay, I'm gonna have you wrap it up.
You know, before you, before you wrap it up, you say we spent 37 minutes. But you know what's, what's the sad part is? Is 100% of the time, we're gonna blame the residents or our fault and not the people in the water department, right? Correct?
Councilman Saab.
No, 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 and again, Mr. Bedu, this has nothing to do with you.
Let me explain something to you. I cannot raise any employees up or recommend any employees if I was not physically present. Taking the word of a resident is not a just or basically solid foundation for write-ups. The whole point of a supervisor is not, and it's not to write people up, that's not the whole point of the supervisor. whole point of the supervisor, to support the staff, but in the case that a staff member doesn't do their job correctly, they are on-site, they see what happened, they write up what happened. If you come to me and say, hey, the resident said this, am I gonna be in the write-up? Well, he said, she said, here's your honor.
I gave the perfect example for you, you can resolve that you don't have to be there. Record the calls.
I understand, record.
We have a water fund, we can use the money from that for the phone calls in the water department.
It's nothing, by the way, it's free.
Councilor Chair.
Hey, sorry, Councilman, even if you record the call, you need somebody to supervise, he cannot do it all, he's basically telling you.
No, I, I understand that, I respect that.
He can't do it all.
Even a supervisor's not gonna be there.
We have an issue in the billing department, we have an issue in the billing department, everybody makes sense, the councilwoman said they need training, they need somebody to supervise their training, and supervise that department, and make sure that the department on the right track. I do agree with Mahdi, we do need somebody. If you guys wanna wait till next year, I mean, this is about six, seven months, but, I mean, if we, we can just roll the ball right now and get somebody, and at least we're on the right track.
It'll take about three months, three to four months to actually hire somebody anyway, so it will be.
How long?
It'll take about three to four months, because you have to, by the time you post a job, it has to be up for thirty to sixty days, then, every single employee has, every single candidate that passes has to be interviewed, which means that by the time somebody gets hired, it might be a new administration. And if you want to say that this, this position started, must start only on January first, I have no issues with that. I'm just letting you know, like, this position is needed. I know you guys said, oh, we need somebody to.
We agreed with you.
No, but I know you guys said, oh, we need to investigate the water department. My investigation says, hey, these employees need the support, and need somebody on-site so they can do the thing, the things required by.
Can we have the final say when you guys hire somebody?
You can put in, amend the motion.
Who did, who did the motion?
Guys, guys, there's a motion, current motion on the table, I'm gonna go to Councilman Wonsol next. Oh, I was gonna say, you know, I'd rather, I, at this, at the time I read this and the agenda, I didn't, I didn't think about going in and asking the employees what they thought about this. It'd be a good idea, you know?
Did anybody ask any of the employees of the water department how they felt about this? Because I, I spoke with a couple.
I've already, I already know their thoughts and process, but unfortunately, their idea is, I, I don't understand their stance on it, honestly. My problem is, Councilor Chair, I am building a department to sustain itself. If I don't build the department to sustain itself, you are putting yourself at risk of turnover and uncompleted work. We lose the biller tomorrow, no bills get out. We lose the billing coordinator, the reports don't get done. With two people are on vacation or on FMLA, we have one person in the office, sixty phone calls, fifty-nine of them go to you and Councilman Staub and say, hey, the person's not answering the phone calls, why not? I'd be like, well, we have only one employee in the department.
I understand the structure.
Councilor Chair, you know, I think, look, you got me fooled, I'm just not ready to make a decision right now.
What I wanted to say was, you know, maybe we should develop, may I write a resolution for this, a call center of a person that just takes complaints from all the departments, looks into it, and gets back with that person.
That's, that's, we're shifting away, we can't afford it, this coming out of the water fund, we have two million dollars.
I mean, one person you call and complain about something, then they call you back?
Yeah, yeah, we're shifting, we're shifting far right.
I will.
Come back to center.
Write a resolution for that.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, to have a new position. I like that idea, Councilman Wonsol, but I don't know if we can afford a call center currently.
One person.
Recording calls.
Well, I think all of our calls need to start being recorded, I think that's a huge.
I can ask, I can ask, you want me to send an email to IT directors to see how much it costs for a call recording system?
Yeah, I can even get a.
I mean, but you, you can directly.
Not do it every day.
Councilor Chair, and I'll add to the motion that the council will have a final say in whoever gets hired.
No, that doesn't ultimately, that, that's, there's a motion on the table.
For two days.
You hire a new position, all, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Madam Clerk, you wanna just take roll call from now?
Yeah.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Now, Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Winsell?
No.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Robert Constance?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Denise Menalowski next.
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Oh, no. Guess who gets the.
You make, you make, by the way, you make very good points, you make really good points.
Councilor Chair, I already know the, I already know what the plan is, so it's okay.
No, sorry.
Motion fails.
Motion what?
No, failed.
He said no.
He said no.
He said no, motion fails.
Who said no?
No, 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 I said fails.
He said pass.
No, motion defeated, how's that? I said fails.
Mahdi, no, you can bring it back, I promise.
We'll work on it.
Corporation Council intergovernmental agreement with Garden City Family Resource Center Establishment.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the City of Garden City for the establishment of a family resource center, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, subject to a final review and approval of Corporation Council, as outlined in nine E. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad, any discussion?
Councilor Chair?
Yes.
Looking over this contract and section, you know, sections eight, nine, and ten, this pretty much gives us absolutely no rights. Everything protects Garden City, not Dearborn Heights.
Wait a minute. Garden City's here.
Councilor Chair.
I've amended it to include, to make it mutual, all the rights that are there, it includes our city, so that is amended to include that, Councilman's correct. The only thing that I was concerned about was the, the ownership of the information, but the, the project will be on, at the twentieth District Court, it'll be in the police station, and Dearborn Heights residents will be at the court, so everything will be there, we've put into protections that gives us mutual responsibilities, and so, that answers your question.
So, the backup is not on here where it says anything that's mutual, so we can bring, I'd like to table this and bring it back with the correct language.
Well, I can have it where we can add the language that you want, and I put it in there, and then have it brought back, I guess, if you wanna look at it, maybe next Tuesday, we're getting for the school year, we'd like to get started. The issues that you're raising are not material, other than protecting us and giving us our rights, I think we can add that in, and we've discussed it.
I, I personally, I'd like to see the contract, we just had this discussion with Tom Wonsol just a minute ago about appraisal, but this is, this is the language, I think the language should be in front of us and should be entered on the record before we vote on the meeting.
We can vote on it conditionally upon the final approval of the contract, we'll present that to you, you can approve the, the agreement, subject to final review by the council.
Mr. Friend, also, Councilman?
I am, but I still recommend that we, we table this and bring it back when it's corrected.
Mr. Friend, I have a question, too, so this, this contract has no, is it for five years, and we, we have the right to terminate within not less than ninety days, red notice?
Yes, for cause. The contract costs the city nothing, the county is paying for it, the project has contracts with Redford, Livonia, most of Wayne County, this gives us a chance to get, and again, we've met with all of our superintendents at least four times, Judge Turfey actually initiated that we needed a program to deal with the number of truancy issues that are coming through the courts with our schools, truancy, vaping, vaping with marijuana, assault and batteries, the, the issues with traffic issue violations, the speeding, all those issues will be flagged by our school resource officers in, in the schools, and brought forward by tickets. The program is, will go for three months, but it's not just the students, it includes the whole family, so the whole family has to participate, and I can ask Sean, we can talk a little bit about.
No, no, I love this program, but I'm trying to understand, what's Garden City's position in this contract, yeah, do you mind, please?
So, they know what a family resource.
Well, let's, yeah, please.
Good evening, Council and Chair, and residents, hi, I'm Sean, I'm from Garden City, I run the Family Resource Center over there. We have a youth assistance program for kids and teens, they can be referred through the court system, through police tickets, and through other means, if they have delinquency, if they're getting in trouble, or if they need some additional assistance with social skills, with extra help with anything, they can be referred over to us, we have a contract with the county to provide those services, it is a fee-for-service process, so if I don't do work with a kid, I don't get paid for that kid coming, so we, we provide the service, we get reimbursed by the county for it. Some of the ability for Garden City to withdraw that's in this contract is based off of that grant funding continuing. We do have a very long track record with the First Contact Initiative and with the youth assistance grants, so we've, we've been doing this, we started in nineteen eighty-five, we've been doing this for a very long time, we've got very good retention with our youth that participate, but essentially, we provide services for youth and their families, parents participate, youth participate, if somebody gets a police ticket, instead of having to wait six months, go to the county court, go through their process, and then ultimately, eventually, get referred to a youth assistance program anyway, except it's probably one in Canton or further away, they can come to us shortly after the ticket is issued in the court process in Dearborn Heights occurs. So, it, it's more convenient for the residents, there isn't a cost for the City of Dearborn Heights itself, anybody who participates in our program is able to participate for free, there's no cost to the families either, and so, some, some of the protections for Garden City are because we are gonna be hiring Garden City staff to come and run this for you here in Dearborn Heights, so we are actually taking on more risk than Dearborn Heights is to be able to do this.
But, but, don't you receive some type of grant funding, though?
We do, but it's fee-for-service, so if I don't have the referrals, I don't provide the services, I don't get paid, so if we, for example, didn't get any referrals from your police department, which, part of it does include that there is a, an agreement for referrals to come, but if we didn't get any referrals, we would not receive any funding, and I wouldn't be able to pay those people.
And we've added to contingent, we're gonna have Judge Turfey and Judge Plowack, who will be talking to the families, the whole family comes in, not just the student, so you can get an overall view. We have a therapist, like a psychiatrist, that'll be on-site at the District Court, and three staff, that'll be working with the entire family. So, we've talked, actually, to our Rotary and our Kiwanis, we wanna provide our services for the family and the needs of the family, so the child is not isolated just being the problem, but we're looking towards a positive solution that's all-inclusive, and I think the retention rate's about eighty percent success rate for.
Yeah, we, we get about an eighty percent success rate, and less than fifteen percent of successful kids come back out and end up getting charged again.
Sean.
And, the, oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna add that the, the fan, we have an eighty percent participation rate of the entire family, and that's what I think we were looking for, to make sure it's overall with our schools and our superintendents.
Sean, I wanna thank you for also coming to the meeting, my question is, I'm just kinda like, I, I'm like a very pride Dearborn Heights individual, so when I think of, like, you coming into our courts, into our police department, you know, getting this, where some employees from Garden City will be working with us, you know, the way I look at it, and then there's still gonna be some type of revenue, right, or it's gonna be some type of jobs that are provided for individuals, I think to myself, why can't I do that for Dearborn Heights people, you know, why can't I offer it to, like, somebody to come in here, and, and, mind you, this is just my brain triggering, and my pride for the city, saying like, well, Sean can do this, why don't we do this? Why aren't, why aren't we hiring more individuals to come out and offer these type of programs, to grant funding, and only get paid, and have our city, you know, provide, back to us, or even ask Garden City to provide to us, you know, versus, it being vice versa, where Garden City's gonna come in, get in the revenue, get the employment, get some type of job.
So, can I?
Yeah.
So, the, the City of Dearborn Heights had a youth assistance program at one point, and it was participating in the grant process with the Conference of Western Wayne, and they were under a Growth Works contract, and they were unable to sustain themselves about ten, no, seven years ago, I think, the, the program ended up closing down, and so the Garden City Youth Assistance Program actually started receiving the referrals through the county when Dearborn Youth Assistance was, Dearborn Heights Youth Assistance was gone. We've, we've been doing this for a very long time, and if, if Dearborn Heights would like to go through the process of applying for the grant, of getting everything going, I'd be even more than happy to help with that. In the meantime, we have a ready-to-go program in a box that I can drop off at your door in a couple of months.
One thing in consideration, I met with our clerk at, at the court, Michelle Atkins, and the court really didn't wanna tie up its resources and its staff to, to do this, so this is the way we can have on-site personnel working with our youth, working with our school resource offices, working with our superintendents, processing without tying up our clerk or costing anything to our, our existing resources. Judge Turf, the judges will participate, of course, our clerks are always available, it'll be on-site and in the, in the police department, and that's where the families will meet for.
Councilor Chair, if you don't mind, I mean, I, I know where you're coming from, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel right now, there's a program that's been with Garden City since the eighties, they have the resources, they have the money, I know where you're coming from, we probably, we could do it in the future, but meanwhile, I think our family and you, they need that program, so I would hope that Councilbody approved this today, so we can move on, once we're ready to apply for their grant and have our own youth department, I think, you know, probably, they'll help us, too.
How long's this contract for?
You can cancel it anytime, within ninety days.
It's a five years, but the kids go through, it's a, it's a three-month program that they'll go from start to finish, hopefully graduate. One of the problems that, that Sean mentioned is, when we give the tickets in the beginning of the year in October, the kids don't get to the juvenile court till April, so if there's a truancy issue, by the time we finally get into the system, the year's already passed, or if there's, if there's, there's traffic violations you guys work with, some of the issues, and some of the delinquency problems, by the time it goes through the system, it's already April, this way we can get within a week.
And so, our, our system in Garden City, every, every ticket that's issued to a juvenile in the City of Garden City by a Garden City police officer, comes to me instead of being JCO one through the court, and the family gets the opportunity to participate in our program, if they're successfully complete, the ticket never goes to court. The Third Circuit Court deals with the juvenile cases for the City of Garden City, and so instead of going downtown, sitting there for six months, they eventually get called, the ticket comes to me. If the family decides, no, we don't want this service, we don't think that it's gonna be helpful, we would rather deal with the court, we get out of the way, and the process continues as normal, if they do want to participate in the service, they have the opportunity to do so, and if they're successful, the ticket goes in a drawer at the police department, and so they don't end up with a juvenile criminal record, they don't end up with all of the, the things that can follow you if you end up getting in trouble young.
Let me ask one other question, Sean, if you don't mind, Councilman. Please. Let's just say, a family goes through and they, they agree, they wanna be in there, and somebody from Garden City's in our building, and then this person, just say, we had a woman in here today, was talking about some type of disability, and a child with some type of disability, and they physically harmed an employee from Garden City in the Dearborn Heights building, whose insurance is liable? Will it be Garden City, or will it be Dearborn Heights? Can that Garden City employee sue the City of Dearborn Heights? Because now you're, because, you know, remember, when we brought in a Plant Moran gap, we wanted to make sure that they were properly insured on their own, because we don't wanna be held responsible for that.
Sure.
So, and we don't know what could arise and put them, you know, the danger of this one employee that's not employed through Dearborn Heights but is working in a Dearborn Heights building. We know how attorneys can be coming in here, and Dearborn Heights being a pocket where they say, oh, we're going to come after the deep pockets of Dearborn Heights. So we want to make sure we're protecting our residents, but we're also protecting our building and our staff, and potentially, you know, God forbid, if the worst-case scenario is something happens, somebody goes crazy and beats somebody up.
Counselor Chair, I think it defines this in the contract here, it says, each party shall maintain general liability insurance coverage during this term of disagreement, Garden City and Dearborn Heights, so each one needs to have their own insurance. So this is going to be out of our pocket?
It's insurance covering already existing that's going to be covered.
I know, but he's saying that we need to get our own insurance too.
We already have it for the building.
I'm sorry, can Mr. Friend not speak, please go ahead.
I think we already have, you can talk, Sean, but we already have our coverage for the building and the people in there.
Okay, so that should cover that?
Right. And I think one thing that I wanted to add, we're going to personalize this as well, because I've talked to our MIDC officers, and we're going to have some of the workforce, so some of these students we're going to be using as part of the work program, taking care of some of our elderly residents that are shuts, and cutting the grass, doing different things within the city, to really teach them some of the behavior of giving back. And I'm a firm believer that some of our best leaders come from the toughest kids, you know, some of the most dangerous, people are getting into trouble, they make the best leaders, and we can't give up on them, we have to have a program in place. I've been here three years, and Judge Turfing talked to me when I got here, but he'd been trying for a few years before that to get something like this off the ground.
Mister, Counselor Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Friend, I know it says here, either party may terminate this agreement for our cause, and I know Counselor Wunsel probably is going to ask you, define cause, can you define what's...
Well, you go ahead and I'll answer it.
Where, I mean, it says, either party may terminate this agreement for cause.
Can I go back to the subject of the insurance and the safety real quick? So our staff all do intensive intake appointments for any youth that comes into the program. Because we are dealing with youth involved with criminal justice, if there is a risk of danger, we can't have them coming into a group where other youth are present. So we do our own evaluations on that, and if we feel that there is a need, we will send somebody to be evaluated for a safety assessment before they can participate in programming. So we have been lucky enough to not have any physical altercations or major harm occur during any of our programs, but that's part of that process as well, so that helps to mitigate some of that risk.
Sean, you also do this with Commissioner Kinesik as well, with something with Wayne County, right?
So, well, with Commissioner Kinesik, I'm on the Garden City Community Coalition Board, and we work with the senior celebration, so with the board that we're on...
I didn't know if this was also timed, because you said some from Wayne County also.
So this is the First Contact Grant Initiative, and it's also the Youth Assistance Program contract that is currently being, they're in the middle of figuring out who they're assigning that to, so that is also part of the process.
You're doing it, it's you guys.
I'm anticipating that we're not going to have any issues, but they have not made any announcements at this point.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before, I'm sorry, can we go back to the word cause?
So our, the word cause was put into it with the 90-day, because we were concerned that if we are hiring staff that are going to be doing this project, and we have not had an intergovernmental agreement, the Family Resource Center has not had an agreement directly with Dearborn Heights before, we were concerned we might end up hiring some staff that would then have to shortly be fired if there was a decision that this was not something that wanted to be done, especially in a time where there could be administration change or other decisions can be happening, it seems like it would be a concern. So we wanted to have enough notice to be able to get people...
No, I'm more than 90 days, definitely need the notice, but what do you mean by cause? I could wake up that morning and say, maybe administration says we don't want to do it anymore.
I deal with the youth, I don't deal with the law, so that's...
Well, cause would be if they lost the grant or the money, that's where we would have to terminate it.
Yeah, it's going to be a reasonable cause.
So be about...
And people will be on the contracts with this, so yeah, reasonable cause.
So this is, this is just going back to Counselor Chair idea too, I think we need maybe take the cause out and just say 90 days, and for any reason, we can maybe give them 90 days.
That would be acceptable for Garden City.
Yeah, and we did talk about that.
We just don't like it.
You like that?
Yeah.
Got you, Counselor. Counselor Wunsel.
Thank you, Counselor Ahmad.
Who determines which offenders go into this program now? I mean, if there's a kid that is a habitual offender, and this is an easy way out for them, or, I mean, who determines which juvenile goes into this program?
We can talk a little bit about the intake and stuff, but the school resource officers will be giving the tickets out to them, and then they'll come to us and we'll decide.
And we do also, if somebody's been through the program, they can't come back for the same offense. If somebody's been through the program and they can't come back in the same year, we do have some requirements on making sure that we're not doing the same thing to no effect. If somebody's been unsuccessful for, because they got caught with a marijuana vape, and they have another marijuana vape and they get caught again, they're going to have to go through the court process. This didn't work, so they're going to have to go through their own process, but if they have a different offense that is unrelated, a couple of years later, or they were 14 when they got in trouble, now they're 17, they might be a little more mature, they have the opportunity to come through at that point, but we, there's some gray area, but for the most part, you don't come back again.
One thing I was going to add is, you're going to have 11 and 12-year-olds, and you want the parent, the parents have to participate and be part of this program. Parenting skills, other things, there's onsite therapists, a psychiatrist, that'll be there to work with the entire family. So in other words, not putting the kid back or just blaming the child, or the person, young person, without looking at the parents, the siblings, and the whole family has to participate. In fact, if you could talk, just a quick second about what brands of reactions typically over time...
Real quick, Roger. Sorry, Counselor Wunsel, hang on one second, I had Counselor Conson before, one second, Counselor Wunsel, forgive me. Counselor Conson, please forgive me on that one.
How long is the, I'm real familiar with the Family Resource Center, it's been around for a while, and what used to happen in Dearborn, when I was a prosecutor in Dearborn, was Dearborn said, well, we're not going to send our juvenile offenders downtown, it's Detroit, they don't know what they're doing, and so they had nothing, they had nothing there. I remember there was the wife of a Dearborn Heights police officer, was a Dearborn police officer, and the Dearborn Heights police officer was dying of cancer, and there's just nobody there, there was no system to deal with it.
Where in Dearborn?
So this is an excellent idea, city of Dearborn.
Had no, no resources, you're saying?
Right, had nobody there, and when a kid would get bullied at school, all this time would pass, and the kids would all say, well, you know, we talked to the public defender or whoever, and we're going to tell the kid to dismiss his complaint, and nothing happened, nothing happened. So this is long overdue.
Go ahead, Counselor Conson, Counselor Wunsel.
Well, you know, I don't want to prolong this anymore, so I don't, I mean, this is a lot of information being bounced around right now, I mean.
Maybe get a study session or something, I don't know, I mean, this is, I'd hate to say yes, and then say, wait, we don't really like this, you know?
Guys, please, nothing from the audience.
So, I'm good.
Thank you. I don't know, to me, I think this is a great idea, I think we need to do this with seeing the contract one more time and fixing the kinks out of this, but I think the reality is, we don't have this program, it's not costing us anything, it's offering resources to families that the children are going through some type of hardship, and I think, I want to thank Garden City for leading this and been doing this since the 80s, but the reality is, I just want to make sure that you guys will have your own insurance, and I want to see that in the contract, so I can approve this with the amended, updated contract that's emailed to the entire council. We've done that in the past, right, Council?
Yes.
Yeah, and I want it to be presented to us, and for final approval by the council. I don't mind having this working relationship with Garden City, but I don't want to approve it without the updated contract.
Counselor Chair, I know, Counselor Saab mentioned something before, what was your point, Counselor Saab?
Our county contract requires that we have the insurance that's...
Mike, turn on your mic.
I believe it was section eight and nine.
That we have nothing out of this.
It represents Garden City, and Roger said he would fix it, but to be honest with you, Sean, I think it's a great program and fully supportable, with the administration ever submitting something back that we asked for rarely happens, I'd really like this to come back with amended contract.
Yeah, I already have made the changes.
And take the word cause off.
And the word cause off.
I mean, maybe we could table this, get the updated information, it'd be the first thing on the next city council meeting, just to make sure that, because it doesn't say Garden City and Dearborn Heights, it's only saying Garden City right now. I know those are probably just clerical errors.
No, no, it's already been corrected.
Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
I just wanted to add on the subject of insurance also, that we are required by our county contracts to have a very high level of insurance coverage, so we do have insurance specifically for our program.
Could you tell some of the cities you work with currently as well?
So we are able to work with anybody from Western Wayne County based on our contract, so we can work with Redford, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, Livonia, Inkster, Garden City, Westland. Westland has their own program, so we don't mess with them, but all of these other places we're able to work with.
Are you referring to other cities right now?
We don't have any sites in other cities, but I have youth in my program in Garden City from all of those different cities, yes.
And we have three schools, since Inkster does not have its own school system, three of our schools are D7 that work with Dearborn Heights, we can able to get to those students currently with this program, yeah.
Thank you. I think this is a great idea, I think we just have to iron out the kinks, and I think this is going to be great for Dearborn Heights and families, I really, really do. So I mean, Madam Clerk, maybe can you give us direction on how to, do you think we should table this, so the updated information, or should we approve it with the, pending the council's approval of the contract, or what is it?
Want the program, you just want the contract to come back to you prior to approval.
Yes. So, what would it be like?
I don't know what the motion is. And you want it clarified, so you know what, you can refer it back to them.
Okay.
And then you can present it, because you've already had the vow.
And then can you add George to the next city council meeting?
Okay.
I mean, look, I think everybody here is on board here, Sean, I think we just want to make sure that we have the updated information and contract.
I think that would be best, and you have it all in one place.
Okay.
I can also leave some business cards, so if anybody has any questions about anything in the next couple of weeks leading up to that meeting, feel free to reach out, and I'll take care of that.
Like I said, one thing, I said we can customize it, we've talked to our Rotary, we've talked to our Kiwanis, to have some of our volunteers work with the families that come through the program, to do different counseling, if there's parenting skills needed, they're able to provide that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time.
So Counselor Conson, would you be okay with amending this to refer back to the next city council meeting?
Well, I think we can approve it, subject to us then approving the contract.
I'm okay with that one, too.
And just so everybody knows, this, the term for cause, that's standard in any contract, so if, for example, there's a new mayor, a new administration, and they just, it protects, because there's a lot of moving parts, if they hire personnel, and then at a whim, somebody changes their mind, that, but they agree to it, so that's fine, let's not go backwards.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
But I, let's, so Madam Clerk is saying it's probably best that we wait till we get the contract, the updated information, because right now it doesn't say Dearborn Heights, only says Garden City, but Roger said he's got the updated information, he just didn't share it with us. So let's go with the recommendation of Madam Clerk, I think we refer this to the next city council meeting, I mean, it looks like everybody's on board here, we just want to make sure we have the right contract in front of us.
It's fine.
Okay, so Counselor Conson, are you okay to amend it, to bring it to the next city council meeting with the right information?
Yes.
Counselor Ahmad, you second that?
Yes.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries, congratulations. Next up is 9F, did we remove this?
Yes.
Next up is 9G, Parks and Recreation Director Z, Senior Center Donation Restriction Account.
Counselor Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Comptroller's Department to create a new account for the senior centers restricted donation to be used exclusively for the benefit of the Dearborn Heights senior centers. In addition, the disbursement of funds from the second will be permitted only with the anonymous approval of the following, the Berwin Senior Center Coordinator, Elin Senior Center Coordinator, and the Parks and Recreation Directors outlined in 9-G.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ahmad, seconded by Counselor Con, sorry, Counselor Saab, any discussion on that?
Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimously loud, too, congratulations.
Thank you, and seniors, thank you, and I just wanted to assure them that their money would be safe, and that's why we brought it all to council, to make sure everything was recorded, and everything's good, so they're going to be very happy, and we'll continue to service them.
Thank you, Director. Next up is Parks and Recreation Director Zaboznik, Richard A. Young Center Coordinator, position for reclassification.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Conson.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the formal change of the Richard A. Young Recreation Coordinator position to a 40-hour-a-week exempt position as outlined in 9H.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Conson, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think this is really a great idea, I mean, the Richard A. Young, it's a beautiful facility, right now, the city, as everyone does, has problems hiring employees, and they need somebody there available to be on call to help run the center, so I think it's a great idea.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir.
So Director, this is going to be like a five-day week now?
Yes, yes. The center, the Young Center, that is our only really true center, and a lot, there's a lot that our, my standards are high, and what needs to be done there as far as programming, maintenance, the proper way to clean, we have equipment that the staff doesn't even know how to use yet. We deal with everything from, you know, squirrels that have died in the air ducts to chasing squirrels out the door, you know, we have children and that we deal with, with the day camp, a huge responsibility to operate that building in every way, and we're making progress every day, everything is running smoothly there, we want to continue that way, and then that takes it away that I don't have to be called all the time, every time, there's a problem at the Young Center and concentrate on the parks and grants and everything else, because we are a small staff of only two or three people, and we accomplish a lot, and we have accomplished a lot in this short time.
Thank you, Director, and I want to tell you, man, you are doing such a phenomenal job, for real, round of applause, my hat goes out to you.
We're going to make a difference, I mean, I'm sure you were at the shelter at Swopta, and you've probably seen a big difference just over days.
You painted the...
We painted it, I've entered 100 work orders in the last four months, we have, we're fixing everything in every park, and it's a little overwhelming, because we have a lot of problems, but we're focused on the Young Center, Swopta, Daly Park, and Central Park, and of course, Van Houten Park, which is more than a handful, but we're going, that's our first wave, and get all those up to standard.
But, you know, I also want to talk about like your presence, your over-communication, you're coming here, you're at every city council meeting, you're in a tie, like, I want you to know that these things, they really resonate with me, and I want to thank you for your real leadership, because, you know, that shows the type of, how serious you are about this role, and how important it is to you, and it's even after you're done with work, you're coming here, you're sitting at a city council meeting, and you're constantly showing up and dressed up, and I appreciate you for that, I really, really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, and we'll just continue on, and we're moving fast, and we've all begun.
Was that motion on the table, any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries, congratulations. Next up, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton Resolution Regarding City Charter, Section 8.9, Disbursement of Funds.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution regarding City Charter, Section 8.9, Disbursement of Funds, resolving the following. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council affirm the authority of the City Treasurer, Lisa A. Hicks Clayton, to demand from the City Comptroller, all payment requests backups are on file, and these shall be subject to inspection by the City Treasurer's office. Accordingly, in addition to the City Council reiterates the Treasurer's authority as required by the City Charter, Section 8.9, to reject warrants checks issued on general ledger line items with zero balances. Furthermore, the City Council only first authorizes warrants for necessary expenses under City Charter, Section 8.9, if such an expense is for an emergency or urgent matter, accordingly pursued to City Charter, Section 5.3M, and the City Charter, Section 8.9, the City Council directs the mayor to certify the necessity of any and all payments requested without City Council approval, and authorize the Treasurer to reject any all payment without City Council approval if those payments are deemed not to be necessary expense, as defined by this resolution. All non-emergency and non-urgent expenditure payments shall be presented for the City Council approval on a bi-weekly basis, as outlined in 11-8.
So we have two as recommended, recommended motion, one and recommended motion, two, recommended motion one was in our backup, recommended motion two was issued by special legal counsel here, so we, as the city council, have to choose one of the two. I personally think these are great ideas, thank you Treasurer for bringing this up, however, I still think that this is something we need to kind of have a sit-down, talk through, what are you dealing with, what are you experiencing, and I think we need to bring that to a study session, at least for myself, that's what I think, I think we need to get kind of into the, kind of into the weeds a little bit, because you are going through a lot. I'm a part of these emails, and it's not fair, and you're looking out for the best interests of residents, but we also need to make sure, because, you know, I've had these conversations, I believe I had a conversation with our clerk earlier today, too, I think it's important that the residents also know what's happening, we don't just kind of put We don't just kind of put policies in place, and we're like, well, we're doing the policy, and then we're trying to spend thirty, forty minutes having these discussions over what the residents don't even know yet.
Right. Well, what I do want to say is, this is directly from the charter, so we all are familiar with the charter. Regarding the first section, the first part, that is providing backup and making sure that if the, it talks about zero balances, the lot, I have to review every single check, every single warrant. I will continue to do that, because sometimes I find they're not drawn on the right account.
You do a good job.
And I have to send them back. Or they're drawn on an exhaustive GL, which clearly, Section 8.9 says, those have to be destroyed, they have to be void. And I send them back to give the Comptroller's Office a chance to fix that. But the reality is, and I'm going to just say it, shouldn't be coming to me in the first place if it's drawn on a zero balance account, right? That's the charter. We, as elected officials, are sworn by oath, that's part of our oath, to uphold the local ordinances, the state, and federal laws. That includes the city charter. So I would tell you, it takes a lot of work and a lot of time, and I've even been creating spreadsheets with all the checks that I send back, so you guys know.
And you email it to us.
I email, I mail it to you.
And I see them.
Yep. And I just want you to know. I mean, I also want you to know that in the charter, what's really important is that threshold that we talk about of fifteen hundred does not exist under Section 8.9, which is where the authority comes from dispersment or distributing the funds, right? It's not there. If you do the search on your charter for fifteen hundred, it's only going to come up under the bid process, right, for that. So that's really important. So really, it's up to the council body. Again, you are the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, the fiduciary responsibility. You're not seeing that. Now, I do send you the check register, but you're still, it's already done, right? Money's already out the door by that time for anything under fifteen hundred, when that fifteen hundred threshold does not exist in this charter, except for the bid process. So that is, that, there is a provision, again, which was mentioned in the second paragraph of your furthermore, regarding City Charter, Section 5.3m. And like I said, your special counsel's already advised on this, right? Already advised you all. And I agree with that person, right? But there is where the mayor, if he has something that's an emergency or urgent, can approve that, but has to bring it back to this honorable body, right? But there needs to be a provision that we can reject something if it's not an emergency. For example, all these checks under fifteen hundred, are those all emergencies? Because you guys aren't approving them. You're not. You're not seeing them until I send you the check register, which is at the end of the month, the new month, right, beginning of new month. It's already done. So really, that's all I'm asking, is that the charter be followed. And I think we're all sworn by oath to do so.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Yep.
Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. I, I agree with the Treasurer wholeheartedly. You know, it's a shame that you have to say one of your qualifications is transparency, when that should be a give-me. You know, I mean, in, in this government we have in Dearborn Heights here, it's, it's so sad. Myself and we, as a body, have been asking administration for a breakdown of the payroll for years.
Itemized.
And we haven't gotten it. I think the, the latest information I got was that they're breaking it down, down by department.
That's what I see, sir.
Yeah. And so we, we should, to the Treasurer, she should get a breakdown of each employee and what they're making. Because how do you know, a department's spending, you know, they're getting, this week's payroll is, is a hundred and fifty thousand, and there's five people in there. You don't know what each person's getting. You know, maybe one's getting a, a bonus or something. You don't, we don't know. And we've been asking for that for years.
Bonuses, huh?
Yeah, bonus. You never know. I mean, why not? I mean, what, what are they hiding? And, and they add, they add, it, it, all adds up. They send in to the Treasurer, you know, a payroll of one million, five hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. They came up with that number by adding up each person individually, so all they got to do is press a button and get, print out each person's pay.
You know what's even more alarming, Councilman? And I think the Treasurer could talk, or the clerk can talk about this. Our payroll one week is one hun, one point five, and then it's like two point two in the next week. What happened? How did we go up an additional seven hundred thousand dollars?
I mean, we, we have, the Treasurer, as her position as Treasurer, and we as council people, should know what every person is getting paid.
I mean, I don't think we...
Councilor Chair.
I don't think we need to...
May I add to that?
It's our right.
Please.
We control the money. It's our right to know.
Yeah, hang, hang on. Yeah, I think we need to just, as long as the numbers are matching what we approved, is, is what, you're right. It should be broken down, itemized, redacted in private information to the Treasurer.
Yeah, and we're not looking for like even names, addresses, social security number. That is not what we're asking for.
Yes.
We're saying the position title, or whatever you want to say, how much is that getting paid?
Councilor Chair.
It should be able to balance with what, excuse me, please, sir, please, with what the council has budgeted, right?
Right.
Okay? And if you're exceeding it, then that, we need to ask the questions, right? That's what we're elected to do. It's not about personal information. It's not even about accusing, we heard the word fraud earlier, that's not it. It's about oversight. You are, again, stewards of taxpayers' dollars. Yes, we've all asked for those reports to be itemized. No, we haven't gotten to that. And it amazes me, though, I got to tell you real quick, this is public money, you guys. This payroll is public money. It's all public information, by the way. Okay? If you actually did a search and a dive, you can look up positions, you can find out how much it's, you know, their salary is. It's there. But are we getting the information provided to us when we have to prove it to be paid out of the taxpayers' funds, out of the account? We're not getting that. Why? Why is there such a big objection to being transparent with public money? I don't understand that. We already heard it tonight. There, there was objection raised. I don't understand it. I just don't. That's all my personal...
Thank you. Hang on one second, Treasurer. Roger, I'm going to go ahead.
I might be misunderstanding, but I know last May, all the, every employee's pay pace was, the name of the employee and the salary was distributed to council. I don't know if I might be misunderstanding what Treasurer's asking for, but everything was disclosed. The only thing was W.2's, private information was not, but it was turned over to council last May, two thousand twenty-four. In fact, and then two thousand twenty-three, October two thousand twenty-three, we already went through the, the issue that we can't amend charter with an ordinance with a resolution. We went through the analysis, we went through eight point nine, and we went through the policies to talk about what the fifteen hundred and the five thousand, everything else is put through. I, I just don't want to reinvent the wheel, but maybe I misunderstand, but I know every employee name and salary was distributed to council.
Mr. Chair, may I respectfully respond to that? That is from the budget. Those are the budget items, line items that the council approves for payroll. That's not what we necessarily lines or matches up with what the payroll actually is.
Thank you, guys.
Councilor Chair, because we already know what their salary is. We budgeted for it.
No, their name.
We just want to know what each pay, each, each pay, each pay cycle, we want to know where that money's going.
Guys, who's it going to? The motion on table, let's take it to a vote. Okay?
Yes.
And we didn't even have a second.
I'm sorry. Motion made by, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by...
Second.
by Councilman Wenzel. All right? And are we choosing motion one or two? Councilman Ahmad.
Two.
With, with recommendation.
The one I read them.
Okay?
We're going to refer to a study session, or we're not?
Well, we're going to go with Mr. Miyake's recommendation was on this one, which was recommendation number two. Okay? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, ready? Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
No.
Robert Coniston.
No.
Tom Winslow.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
No.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Look, I, I really, I, I want this. I actually support this. I really do. And I also want to take it to a study session. And so like, I don't want to be the deciding factor of voting no or yes. I think the residents need to know exactly what is happening. You know, I mean, here, I got residents nodding their head, saying they want to hear more of this. So I'm going to have to say I support it, but I want to take it to a study session, so therefore I'm going to vote no, just so that we can have next Tuesday, George at five thirty, can we reschedule a study session?
Send Mary and have a...
Yep, we're going to back-to-back.
Okay.
We're going to back-to-back.
So that motion is defeated.
Yep, it's been defeated, but please add it back also on the next following city council. We, we can't just have it added?
Yeah, you can do that. Yes.
Why can't the council chair just say they, they want to add it?
Because it kind of has to come from the, whoever presents it, presents it.
Well, we, we already have it on the city council meeting. We're just pushing it to the next following city council. I don't think it needs to come from her, to be honest.
It does have to go through civic clerk, because she's the presenter.
Madam, Madam Treasurer, please, please resubmit it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Huh?
It needs to be more added to it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, you know, and I think, and I think the Treasurer's open to wanting to have these, you're going to host that study session, right? You're okay with that?
Tuesday, you said.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Next up is new business here, business license renewal for Cooper's Garage.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Cooper's Garage at two one two four four Van Born is outlined in thirteen A.
Support. Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Yes.
I did go by there, checked it out. Really clean place.
I know you love Cooper's Garage.
Yeah, we know.
Eh, I don't, I've never been there. I mean, never took any business there or anything. But very nice, they keep their lawn up really nice, really nice-looking building, and...
Where's the mechanic shop?
I talked to some of the neighbors there, right next to it, and they said they're, they're really respectful, respectful to the neighbors, and they help, help them out. I mean, it's pretty nice.
I was talking to a resident on Monroe and Annapolis, across from Mr. Owens, like to the side of him. And they were like, talking about how much they love this place, and I was like, oh, awesome. Yeah, so Cooper's Garage was like the talking point.
Yeah.
I was like, oh, Councilman Wenzel loves them, too, so I was like...
I don't love them. I like them. All right.
I, I actually know one of the daughters really well.
It's one daughter.
Yeah, Cheryl.
Accuse yourself of voters. Yeah, so it looks like, yeah, they're, they're pretty popular. A lot of people like, um, good for Cooper's Garage. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have temporary food truck, car license applications for Amelia's.
Amelia's Guac and Roll.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman...
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, ten car license application for Amelia's Guac and Roll, as outlined in thirteen dash B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion? Excuse me?
Michigan Avenue, I think it's on Michigan Avenue. Is it in the...
There's no address on here.
It's, uh...
It's in the back, I think.
It's in the back up.
It's in the back up.
I saw Michigan Avenue and, uh...
Not the address. I, I don't know. I think it's...
That's at the gas station.
It's two five seven six eight Michigan Avenue.
Yeah. What's the address?
Two five seven six eight.
So it's just the other side of Beach Daly. It's just west of Beach Daly.
I, I will tell you guys, you know, I know, I know we've had a lot of discussion regarding food trucks, and I do want to talk about Shawarma that started off as a food truck in the city of Dearborn Heights, and now they're a brick and motor in the city of Dearborn Heights. So congratulations to them. And I know we were like, oh, is anybody going to ever, you know, take away from, from our tag space? Well, there was a building, a restaurant that closed down. They raised some money. They were able to sell enough Shawarma sandwiches, and now they opened up a, a business right in the city of Dearborn Heights. So I hope Guac and Roll can do the same, and they can really rock and roll. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded, I'm sorry. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constance. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say something real quick, how you were talking about the food trucks. The, the food truck that took over at Fordham Beach Daly.
It's unbelievable.
He was at, at two different locations on Warren, and he put all of his money into this. And Warren's not as busy as Ford Road, so I hope he's doing better there. He was...
You know, I had their sub the other night.
Okay.
Which one? The one I wanted yesterday? Yeah, he wanted it yesterday. It is unbelievable. I can't believe how good it is.
I just wanted to mention, because I know...
You owe me one today.
Councilman Saab's got you.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Thank you, Madam Clerk. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is comments from council members. Councilman Saab.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor.
I'm going to start with you and end with Councilman Wenzel.
No, I'm going to, I had a...
Yeah, I'm up time. Two minutes.
I had an individual reach out to me last week.
I agree.
He's a host of some properties for short-term rentals in the city, quite a bit of properties. He said, he reached out, said, you know, Dearborn passed this, I'm trying to beat the gun to see if I can sit with you, have a talk with you, have a cup of coffee. I said, no cup of coffee is ever going to change my vote. And he's like, you know, we take it in, you're, you're generalizing everybody. I'm a good host, and I have property, I believe here and in Florida. I was like, no cup of coffee is going to make me change my vote. Residents don't want it. I don't want it in my neighborhood. And he started ground, he's like, I want to have a cup of coffee with you. I'm like, I'm just not interested. I know where I stand on this, and nothing can change my mind on this with what's going on with the city and those short-term rentals. So I'm pretty sure he reached out to every single council member, too, because he said he would. So I hope everybody had the same answer to him. Second thing is speeders. Again, I swear, between three to five o'clock, I think the officer had left from here on, on John Daly. It's a speed track. It's just, I don't even know if speed bumps would help that area, how bad it is. Please tell your kids to slow down. We're in a neighborhood group chat. The videos they send us of kids peeling out, and they say this kid's sixteen years old, this kid is seventeen years old. And honestly, the only people we got a hold of count of all the parents, they're giving these kids these, these sports car, fast cars, and they're just driving sixty, seventy miles down our residential neighborhoods. I'm hoping with this new admin, uh, new administration coming in next year, we can start a program where we really enforce, enforce it real bad, where it hits their pockets. Maybe it'll change, because I think that's the only thing that's going to happen. Other than that, cut your grasses. Grasses are grown in the neighborhoods. I see them in weeds. Thank you.
Next up.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. First, I would like to wish a happy early birthday to Ms. Strappi this coming Sunday. My time is up. And I'm sorry, Madam Treasurer, I won't be here next week for the study session, but I'm all support. I'm all about transparency and making sure we're doing our job with the money. And I know August fifth would be election day, so I hope everybody practice your legal right to go out, go out and vote. Third, the Dearborn Heights Police Department and the Chief of Police invite all residents to attend a police night out, national night out. That would be Wednesday, August sixth, between six and nine P. M. at the police station parking lot, where there will be free food, music, games, bouncy houses, and a game truck, and fun activities for all ages. So I hope you guys can make it August sixth at six o'clock at the police department parking lot. And I guess that's it. Thank you, Councilor Chair.
All right, I'll go next. Happy almost birthday to Rose Strappi, who is the godmother of this entire community, and we love you so, so much, for real. You're the best, Rose. I also want to wish Rachel Appoiny a happy birthday. Rachel and her husband Chris do a phenomenal job. They're actually doing this thing where they're giving you meeting overviews, and I'm sure Chris is the one probably running that. He's doing a great, great job. I actually read it all the other day, and I was like, man, this is great. Who knows, maybe he'll apply for a job in Dearborn Heights. But, but it was, it was really, really nice to be able to read and see that type of stuff. You know, I don't want to say why, but I've been going around to a lot of the neighborhoods, and, you know, as, as I went through some of the neighborhoods, I cannot believe the amount of blight in our neighborhoods. You know, our, it is crazy. I don't know what it's going to take for residents just to wake up and say, I'm going to cut my grass. But why is it so hard to trim your bushes and cut your grass? It's driving me, I don't, nobody's asking you to plant flowers. But I don't know why we don't have a beautiful city, beautiful commission. It is like, Director Lafive, thank you. I know your, your staff, especially during the season right now, it's so, so hard, but like, there's only so much you can do. There's only so many ordinance officers can write a ticket and go out and go back and forth, but it's every single day, somebody's talking to me about their blight, and every single day, I'm calling Kevin from the ordinance department, or I'm calling Director Lafive, and I'm like, please call this person, please call this person, please check up on this home, please go to this home. This person granted permission to go in the backyard. And it's like, nobody cares. We, we really, we really need to figure this out, because the blight is just so ugly in the city. People just don't like it, and it's, it's really bringing, it's driving down property value, it's driving down our community, saying that people, you know what? I don't want to live here. I don't want to send my kids to the schools here. I don't want to be a part of Dearborn Heights. And at one point, like I've said this many times, to be in Dearborn Heights was really this up, middle scale, and, and it's no longer feeling like that anymore. And then, you know, lastly, I want to thank our police officers. Most recently, my family and I were coming home with my, my son and my daughter and my wife, and it seemed like a, a neighbor of mine was going through... Was going through some type of manic episode, and our police department really knew how to assess the situation. They knew how to have a conversation with the individual. They were able to, you know, they were able to detain the gentleman who was going through some type of emotional breakdown. The family was the one that called, but I was so proud of our police department. They were so calm, they were so collective, they had a great conversation. The man actually was holding a weapon and climbed the roof. The officer was able to kind of, you know, calmly have a conversation with him, to get him to come down, take the weapon where he was actually handed over the weapon, and they were able Take the weapon where he was actually handed over the weapon and, uh, they were able to take him over to the Dearborn Heights Police Department. So congratulations to our police department. That was awesome work by you guys. Councilman Constant.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Um, good meeting. Let's just work on getting things done and getting them accomplished. We talked about the, uh, court resource program. It's a great program, very needed. Uh, let's, let's get it done. Uh, uh, somebody inside who works day to day, uh, with the water department says we need a supervisor position. Uh, uh, I think it's a good idea. Let's, let's get it done. Uh, regarding the fire station, I was not aware that the, when we did, for example, the parking lot at Canfield, which I've tripped on, uh, many, many times. We didn't do a full twenty-year job, you know, that's fine, but let's, let's, let this council concentrate. I know we don't have the cooperation all the time at the mayor's office about getting things done.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Um, any other council members?
Can I combine?
Yeah, you can combine, absolutely.
Okay. In reference to the Ekor's Creek, uh, I was at Jackson Street today. A lady abuts the property. Their name is Adair. And they've received something from Wayne County saying that, uh, stuff is gonna start happening this week into next week on the creek. Bridge Street is being, uh, taken to where they're gonna start cutting down the stuff and, uh, working on, uh, the Ekor's Creek. I also have something from one of the committee members from the Ekor's Creek, uh, that shows, um, one of the places where we're doing a bridge. And we will be discussing all that tomorrow night at our Ekor's Creek meeting. And that's six o'clock at three, 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 five, South Beach Daily. If anyone's interested, we can update you on the latest as we know it. And then, uh, to go into announcement, uh, the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association will be at the Justice Center this Thursday only. And that will be at six o'clock. One of our speakers will be our treasurer. The other speaker will be our assessor. So everyone is welcome to that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your announcements all the time, like always so consistent and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Uh, Councilman Wanso. Am I ending with you or am I going with Councilman Alaska?
Oh.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councilor Chair.
Um.
You're on the clock.
I'm on the clock, okay. Uh, recent, you know, recently we've established through re, through res, through, um, resolutions I submitted to city council, a public safety commission, a veterans affair commission, and a commission on disability concerns. And these three commissions are kind of being put on the, are being put on the side back burner. Um, as a matter of fact, the Veterans Affair Commission, the administration told a member that we voted on that illegally. It doesn't exist. And this was voted on by council approved. And, uh, I'll talk to you about who I talked to later. And I'm working on something right now, hopefully by the end of the week where we can get these three commissions. This public safety commission needs to be more involved in all the things going on and they're, they're not. Uh, they're, they're trying to get access to different things. So we gotta help them out in our other two commissions, the, the disability commission and the veterans commission. So I'm working on something like that. It's a shame that these people want to be parts of this commission and they're telling, told, being told by the administration that this commission doesn't exist.
That's bull crap.
We, we voted on it.
Yeah, unanimously it has.
And, uh, once again, you know, August ninth, uh, in conjunction with the Friends of Detroit River, um, there's cleanup program at, uh, Heather Lane Park. They'll be cleaning the banks of the creek. Also supplies are provided by Friends of Detroit River and we'll be, uh, working on the playscape there also. And on the same day, August ninth, the dance club, uh, having their annual field day at Swapka Park. And Councilor Chair, is there any way that we could have next week's me, study session be a reg, a special meeting? Um, cause I want to get the, uh, the okay to get the, uh, the, uh, community garden going, cause I have, there's a lot of people, dozens, literally dozens of people that want to get, start getting involved, but they're not, not gonna do anything unless we got the okay to do it. Can we, is that something we can vote on? Can we make it a special meeting?
Well, next week we have a meeting on our, uh, um, health benefits, which I, um, George, we're doing that. Can we also make sure that we have like representations from both unions or all unions? From like the police, the fire as well, because that also works in conjunction with, with, with our fire department, our police department. Uh, and, and believe it or not, they had some questions. And then I also want to make sure that those that are also submitted are also here when they're presenting. I want to have it, it's a ten, ten to fifteen minute presentation.
Can we make it a special meeting? Is it too late? I mean, it'd be requested by the council chair?
Um, well, I'll talk with, I'll get with George tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, cause if, and, and another thing, if something came up today where August twelfth, our next scheduled meeting, I have a family situation where I won't be, be able to attend that meeting.
The which one?
Uh, the next, the next regular meeting, August, uh, twelfth. That's a long way. That's four weeks away, basically.
Yeah, man, why is it so long? No, is that our next meeting?
Today is the twenty-second, so it's about.
About four weeks.
Well, three weeks.
More than that.
Oh, three weeks. Twelve days and eight days. That's about twenty days.
Yeah. One day away from three weeks.
Yeah, I said three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
You said four weeks.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, anyway, I mean, if we can, if we can make it just a special meeting and let me know on the event, because if we do, I'd like, you know, like to put something on the agenda for a special.
One day is the, uh, uh, you said August ninth is the rouge?
August ninth, yeah, it's a Saturday.
Okay, and then what else do you have also on August ninth? Don't you have something?
Community garden. I'd like to vote on the community garden, the, you, the authorized the use of the property.
I know, but you said August ninth, you said you had a couple of things.
Oh, the dance club field day.
What time is that?
That's, uh, they start like a ten or something. They go all day.
Okay, what about the baseball game that's taking place?
They're.
The police and fires.
Yeah, that's. That's, that, I got a kibosh.
What are you talking about?
Yeah.
It's not happening because the, uh, police department reached out to me today and said it is.
On that field day?
Yeah.
I think it's a, a separate date, unless they changed. The last thing I heard is that they were, they were, they wanted to have their own special thing on a s, uh, special location. And I, they, they, that's, this is the last I heard down here on the north end.
Down on the north end?
That, that's the last thing I heard, but they might have changed it since then. That's the last thing I heard.
I mean, why, why wouldn't we want to like have this?
Like we did last year?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Why didn't you do it?
We. It's not, it wasn't my decision. It was the police and fires' decision. Like I said, maybe it's changing. They haven't contacted me or anybody else about changing it, but the last thing I heard it was gonna be held at, at Central or whatever, you know, the, and I don't know, but you can find out, but that's the last thing I heard is that they didn't want it.
I think you need to, you need to do what you did last year.
Well, we can't, I mean, it's, it's, we could try. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to them.
All right.
Fire and police. But I mean, if we could have a special meeting instead of study session next week.
I'll, I'll get with George and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, is my two minutes up? No, that's good. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Is, is there a reason why we're not doing it at Swapka Park?
I don't know. It's, it's, it wasn't up to me. I mean, we want, we approached them months ago, months ago. Uh, myself and, uh, Barb. And maybe she knows it. She on? No?
I don't know. Well, I'll.
Yeah, yeah.
We gotta figure that out.
Yeah.
We, yeah, I want to make sure that we're supporting it. That's on the same day.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yep.
Uh, we're gonna take it open up to the audience. I'm gonna start off on Zoom. Uh, I'm gonna go with, uh, Dana. I believe it's Mr. Parrish. Um, but let me make sure he gets signed here. I don't want to start his time until he starts to speak. There he is. Uh, Madam Clerk, please unmute Mr. Parrish. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Hold on one second. You're still muted, uh, Dana. You, you see?
There we go.
There he goes.
Uh, Dana Parrish, Brandy Park Street, Dearborn Heights. Good evening, everyone. Um, a couple of things. One was, um, on the, uh, water department. Um, see if you can get on top of that because obviously that's a hot potato. I didn't, I wasn't gonna say anything about that tonight, but since it came up, please see what you can do about that as soon as you can, because everybody's, uh, it's on everybody's mind. Second was, I had an issue with, um, uh, electrical permits and things, so I went to BSNA. Um, BSNA is not being updated, at least for my home anyways. Um, I found some permit, the last permit that I had pulled in my, my home that showed on BSNA was decades ago. Now, I've had some work, some recent work done and I was checking it and it wasn't there. So I were paying tens of thousands of dollars for a system that isn't being updated. I have no clue. Um, also, uh, another one, I had an electric stove, electric put in for, for a stove for me because of my respiratory issues. Um, and some other issues done. And, um, come to find out, uh, it was, I'm sorry, it was an electric outlet outside for, for, uh, electric vehicle. And I found out by calling, they said it was approved by the city. No, it wasn't. It was inspected. No, it wasn't. Because they have to inspect it in the house. No one ever came. So I wish Mr. Rock, Mr., uh, Botland hadn't left, because I'd love to find out who's signing off on these inspections. This used to happen way long time ago when somebody else was in charge. I want to know who's doing that. And I also wanted to know if, do we own the data on BSNA in the contract? Does the city of Dearborn Heights own that data? Or does BSNA own that data in that database? Cause that's very important for the city to know whether we have. So if we quit with BSNA, would the city of Dearborn Heights own that data? Or would BSNA own that data? All of our information from the city. Does anyone know that answer to that question?
We, we own the data based on the software, right?
We own the data. They own the software. We have a license to use the software, just like if you have a license with Microsoft. But we, it's, we own the data. It's, it's.
Yeah, I, I suppose the, the real issue is if we switch and we go to A B C, uh, software, if, to migrate that data over, because it's in BSNA, you know, if we get charged to do that. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Our IT director's not here, but, uh, I will, I will reach out to, um.
And to be, and to be certain, to be certain, uh, there is very specific wording. I don't have it at this moment, but I know somebody who knows very well. Um, but there is very specific information which I've sent to the council chair that has to be in that contract. Very specific IT type wording that has to be in there. It says that we, it doesn't say you own the, the, uh, data, but there's very specific wording that has to be in there. If it's not in there, um, we don't own it. Just, you know.
Point.
But I'd like to see about that BSNA stuff and see why we're not putting any information in there and updating it. It's useless if we're not using the system.
Thank you.
Cut out.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dana. And, uh, God bless you.
God bless you.
Dana made my son a Spider-Man thing. Pretty nice, pretty neat. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, S. Kaminsky. Wonder who that is?
Good evening, Council. Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, I got on late, so I missed a good portion of the meeting, but I understood that I was given credit for the handshake deal between the county and Crestwood School District for use of the parking lot at Warren Valley Golf Course for the Riverside kids. Um, I appreciate the kudos, but it was not me. Actually, it was in two thousand and four. And it was Donna Ansonov, um, who arranged that handshake deal. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that. I'm very familiar with it, but it was not me that instigated that.
Thank you so much, Sue. I'm sorry. I was the one that gave the wrong kudos. God rest, uh, Donna's, uh, soul and I appreciate her for that.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
You too. Next up, we have Nicole. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You got three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Nicole Pro, Academy Street, Dearborn Heights. I wholeheartedly agree that you guys need check registers to, so you can see what payments are going in and out. My only comment is I think something needs to be done about utility payments like D T E, um, especially for the D P W waste management. A representative from D T E was at D P W last week to turn off our gas because the bill was past due. Also, we have twenty-yard street sweeper dumpsters that we put the refuse in when the sweepers go out. That priority has picked up to take to waste management, only to be turned away and had to bring the dumpster back because that bill has not been paid. So I think something needs to be put in place to kind of get those out on a more timely basis. And then as far as training for us staff, we did do that about a year, year and a half ago. However, I don't think it was tailored appropriately for municipality workers and the situations that we deal with. It was more kind of like retail-type situations, which really didn't apply to us, so I didn't really find it that helpful. But that's all I have for tonight. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, Nikki. I appreciate you and, yeah, that, that's pretty embarrassing. All right, next up, we have, uh, Sneer, D H P D. I don't, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening, Council. Brian Sneer. I'm the president of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, Police Officers Association. Uh, I did hear a little bit about the softball game and I just wanted to kind of clear that up for everybody. The softball game will be held on August ninth at eight o'clock, um, at Swapka Park. Um, so just so everybody knows, the game will be held there. I hope everybody, including all the council, comes out and.
Who are you, who are you working with on this?
Uh, so the D seven dance club reached out to the fire department and, um, that's kind of how this all got started.
Okay. Can we, can we make sure we include Councilman Wanso on this? And I'm sorry to say that, but this, I mean, look, this guy championed yes last year. I, I swear, not because I love him, but because I watched him last year at the end while everybody was running home. This man was, he was cleaning up, taking off, everything by himself, like, I remember, I think I even took the bag home. I think I still have that tent, but, uh, the truth is, is he was running around, he cut his shirt in half and stapled it, so he was between the police and fire. And I just feel like this is something that he really enjoys, so if we can please coordinate this with him and please coordinate with Barb, uh, because she put a lot of time and effort in this as well last year. So if we can do that, that would be great.
Yeah, not a problem at all.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
I, I mean, I know how much you cared last year. I mean, I, it was on your face. You didn't say it, but I watched you how hard you worked.
Especially he had that T-shirt, have police have fired.
No, but I swear, what, what resonated was at the end of the night while everybody was tired and everybody was going home and everybody, I was the one cleaning it.
Did you help him clean?
I did. I helped him put the tent away. Ask him.
Yeah.
Piece by piece, but it was really, it was, you know, it was his tent.
He helped him, he took the tent.
It ended up in my trunk. Um, but now we're gonna open it up to the residents. Or you know what? We'll start off with announcements from the. I don't know why I went to Zoom first, forgive me.
Good evening. Lynn Sania, City Clerk. I'm speaking as your city clerk. Just a reminder that two weeks from today, hopefully we will be ending or finishing up on election night. But I wanted to give you a quick update. Um, we've issued seven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven ballots. The majority of them are from the permanent ballot list, which was mailed out June twenty-sixth. We're at a third, twenty-six hundred returns, a little over thirty-six percent. So we're encouraging those that have their ballots to return them as soon as possible, cause it makes it go better on election day for us. We do have the, um, drop boxes at the Richard A. Young Center, the J F K Junior Library, the Justice Center in City Hall. Um, a reminder to those that are turning them in, prior to returning them, please make sure you have a signature on that and be, um, because if you don't have a signature on that, we have to reject it. We, we call the voter up that day and let them know that they have to come in and cure their signature and they also get some, a piece of paper in the mail, a notification in the mail. Um, as well as, the only thing we do with the absentee ballots before, uh, the processing on election day is verifying their signature, that the one that we have on file, if there's any doubt and question on that, that's the same thing. They have a chance to cure their signature. And they have that, I think it's like up to three days after the election to do that, but we want them to do that beforehand. Um, on Saturday, uh, Aug, not October, August the second, the office will be open from eight A M. to four P M. And then the polls will be open at seven A M. and close at eight P M. on August fifth. As you all know, that we did, um, consolidate our precincts. We have eight polling locations. Um, each re, each registered household received, um, notification that their precinct location
I choose it.
may have changed whatsoever. All registered voters as well received a new voter I D. card. If they did not receive one, uh, give us a call at seven, or seven nine one, three, four, three, nine. Um, I do want to think, well, first of all, I want to, um, tell you, the notifications that we have provided to, to get that word out besides the postcards and the registration cards. Um, there is civic send, no, right, is that civic send? Okay. Um, I've asked, um, Bobby Ankrap to put a notification on, for the e-newsletter, so that information should be online. I'm also gonna do a flash on our website and we're gonna try the civic send, which is if we have an email or a phone number, we can, we're gonna try, we're gonna use civic send to send that notification out to the voters as well. And then at the polling locations that we're not going to be using anymore, we're going to use sandwich boards so that the voter does not have to get out of the car, so if they go to City Hall or Kinlock, say Kinlock, they don't have to get out of the car, so it's going to say your new polling location is at, I think it's Camfield. So, and then there is a required, there'll be notices on each of the doors too. And we want, I want to thank River Oaks, St. Sabina, a sincere thank you to these polling locations that have serviced our community for quite a long time. That's River Oaks, St. Sabina, City Hall, Kinlock, Robishod, Thorne, Madison, Bedford, Pardee, and Topolke. And our new, our polling locations are Dearborn Public Schools, the Dearborn Heights Campus on Ann Arbor Trail and Warren, Riverside Middle School at Warren and Beach, Berwin, Caroline Kennedy, Camfield, JFK Junior Library, the Eaton Center, and Annapolis. I'm happy to report that five of those eight are at our own buildings, so we have a little more control over the space. Okay? Thank you. Get those AV ballots in.
Good afternoon, council members. I just wanted to say some announcements with regards to some of the work that's going on. I'm sure you've already heard about it, but the work on Ann Arbor Trail has begun. So road crews have started on the replacement between Evergreen and Parkland on the city's northeast side during the first phase of the project. Only eastbound traffic is permitted in the construction zone, and westbound traffic is being detoured along Evergreen, Warren, and Outer Drive. So travelers are strongly advised to pay attention while driving and obey the traffic regulations and not move or alter any of the signage for the length of this project. We have a map available on the website, as well as what the alternative routes are for residents. We did have quite a few complaints on the first day that this started off, mostly because drivers are not paying attention to the signage there. So we ask for your collaboration in sharing this information with residents if they're having any issues with the traffic there. And piggybacking also off of Councilwoman Brier, we did get notice yesterday about the Ecorus Creek Drain Reach 3 project that they have for the $10 million of ARPA money that the county received to clear the Ecorus Creek. So they are actually starting the week of July 21st through 25th, which is this week, with tree removals between the intersections of Hip Street and Hanover Street. And then on the week of July 28th through August 1st, they're going downstream west of M39 Southfield Freeway. So just be aware that that's happening. All of the residents that will be impacted that are right adjacent to the Ecorus Creek have inside notifications by the county. There is a website available to reach the county and an email available for them that's also posted on our website if anybody has any issues, but we just wanted to give everybody a heads up that these projects are happening.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Good evening, Council. My name is Mary D. Martinez, owner of All American Parties LLC, a local family entertainment company, and I'm a Wayne County resident from Westland, Michigan. I want to share with you two topics I'm very passionate about. The first is Motor City Heroes. Motor City Heroes gives 25% of all real estate commission back to our local heroes like police, fire, nurses, and veterans when they buy or sell a home. We want to help our local community heroes with homeownership, and this is the perfect opportunity to show them our appreciation by giving them back 25% of any commission we receive on a transaction, which ends up being significant savings. Check out motorcityheroes.com for more info. I would also like to announce that I have published the Children's Chapter Book, Adventure Abroad with the McComas siblings, that is now out on Amazon. Read along and follow Mary and Michael across the Atlantic Ocean on an adventure to Parish, France, to study abroad. Discover exciting twists and turns around every corner while learning to use key principles, honesty, courage, perseverance, inconsistency, and your own pursuits to help young readers attain success in any aspect of their life. Adventure Abroad with the McComas siblings is now out on Amazon and is a perfect family read for ages nine to 14. Please, please support your local author and purchase my book. Thank you for your time.
Council Chair, could I ask her to give, give her information, contact information before you leave? Could you do that? Give him, okay, thank you. There you go. Thank you.
If you can leave, there's a form if you can fill up here with your information and give it to the secretary.
Okay.
I can bring it to you, I can bring it to you after I speak. You're welcome.
All right, good evening again. I'm going to speak as the treasurer. First of all, I want to say happy birthday to Rose, happy birthday, and Rachel, of course, who I think is online. I want to thank Nikki, who spoke about the DTE bills and other things that are in the red when we get those checks issued, and by the time they come to me, right? I think that's something that we need to talk about Tuesday, which brings me to the resolution. I want to thank you, council body, you know, those who support, thank you, but those who don't, that's okay, I'm glad that we're going to talk about it. Because I absolutely agree with you that this needs to be discussed of what we've been going through in the treasurer's office for some time, okay? And that leads me to Madam Clerk, by the way, who is doing a phenomenal job as Madam Clerk in elections, but not only that, I don't know if you all realize, because we don't have a comptroller, we don't have an interim comptroller, we have deputy comptroller. She's signing the checks, she has to review them. That's taking time out of her day when she should be focused on elections, so it's a lot for her too, and I thank her for her time, because I know I bothered her today trying to chase down checks for people who are calling me. You got them? Okay, see? And I think that's something we got to talk about, because I'm not quite sure, at one time, the comptroller's office used to, when they get an invoice from a department, I'm going to pick on DPW because he's right here, they would stamp it with a date and time. They knew when it came in. I don't know if that's happening anymore, because by the time I get it, and it goes through the, the accounts payable issuing it, right? The invoice and they issue the check, it goes to, has to go through Madam Clerk in this case, because we don't have a comptroller, interim comptroller, and then it gets to me, and then I end up having like 24 to 48 hours or less to turn that thing out, because people are calling, people are calling. And they are calling, and they're being told that I have the checks, but I don't necessarily have them, okay?
Council Chair?
So I just want to say thank you for that, and we'll discuss that on Tuesday.
Can we just leave the discussion for Tuesday so it doesn't become a back and forth?
Absolutely. That's what I was going to say, I think that should be part of the discussion.
I know, we're, it's about to, because now Matty's going to get up and respond to this.
Yeah.
The study session for a raise is crazy.
I was going to say, I'd welcome him to be there Tuesday, because I think this is all part of the discussion, and that's what I was going to say.
This is comments.
Yep. And let me see, was there anything else? Oh, yeah, there's one more thing. One more thing, there was a comment made tonight that was not correct, and I, I feel obligated that we need to correct it, because putting misinformation out is incorrect, okay? It hurts residents, it hurts all of us. The treasurer does not, does not reconcile the accounts to the general ledger or the checks, okay? Plant Moran, Mr. Camiller, Brian Camiller with Plant Moran, in 2021, issued that statement, it's in writing, and I've shared it with this council body probably more than once.
Multiple times.
I want to be really, really clear that we all understand that, because it's a conflict of interest, you see, because we do the work. We can't reconcile our own work, okay? So that's the reason why, and I want to just clear that up, because it was mentioned again tonight, and I want to make sure we have the record straight. Thank you.
Are we, are we giving comments?
Thirty seconds, that's all I want to say. I want to apologize for any of the inefficiencies that accounts payable department has had in the past month or so. Due to the comptroller stepping away, as well as there's a new employee in a accounts payable position, I've had to train that employee, as well as taking on the duties of the other parts of the department. So we had had some, have had some inefficiencies, but the employee is getting caught up to speed, and she's doing a very good job. I am doing my due diligence in trying to process these accounts payable as soon as possible. However, sometimes because the threshold is 1,500, these bills are not being paid on time due to having to be approved by council, which is part of my procurement policy that I'm going to be proposing next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Matty, very much. Any more comments from resident, oh, director? Your prize, your prize.
Uh, real quick, I just got a couple announcements, I guess. On a positive note, we finally hired three employees that I think might work out for quite a while, so services will start, I think, increasing efficiency a little bit. Our HR director, I think, is doing a pretty good job of setting up some processes that will help us to get qualified individuals in. Again, if you're still looking, City of Dearborn Heights, second to none in so many ways, but...
Director, sorry.
Still think it's a great way to...
I cut you off. I actually had a resident reach out today. He's a truck driver, trying to apply for a position on the website, can't find it. I'm going to send you over his information.
That's fine.
Please call him.
That's fine. I can do that tomorrow.